Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Verona Town Council for April 30, 2023. Our first order of business, our regular municipal clerk is not here this evening, so I would entertain a resolution for to accept Mr. Diarco as our clerk pro tempore. He does have a valid municipal clerk's license, number 0144.
Similar.
Do I have a second? Okay. Mr. Diarco, would you please hold the role?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilman Tambora?
Yes.
Councilman McAvoy?
Yes.
Council Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Yes.
And Mayor Ronan?
Yes, all right. Oops. Thank you very much. Oh, yes. Well, that was roll call to accept the resolution. Oh, yes, yes, exactly. But we'll call it. We need to have you please read the open board meetings.
A statement of compliance of the open public meetings at night. The notice requirements of the public, the open public meetings have been satisfied with respect to this meeting of the township council. The meeting time and date were included in the public meeting notice along with the public internet link and the telephone call-in information. Said notice and meeting agenda was posted in the municipal building and sent to the official newspapers of the township, the Verona City Bridge Times and the Star-Ledger, at least 28 hours preceding the start time of this meeting. The agenda and public handouts can be reviewed online at www Verona Town Hall dot org backslash council meetings. A public comment period will be held in order. It is listed on meeting agenda and instructions on how to comment will be provided at appropriate time.
Now, would you please call the role one more time to those here?
Councilwoman Holland?
Here.
Councilman Tambora?
Yeah.
Councilman McAvoy?
Present.
Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Here.
Mayor Ronan?
Here. We also have Victoria Lucino from the Way Law Room as our attorney this evening, and we have Mr. Deloya, Mr. Diarco as our county manager and court pro tempore as well. Mr. Stephen Neil, our director of administration and economic development. Whatever, please rise for the fudge of the. I believe.
Do the flag of the United States of America as with the Republic, who are religious fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, just, you know, a couple of just congratulations from community events that I've attended in the recent few weeks was the Boy Scouts had an outstanding pancake breakfast. Also wanted to create to congratulate the Episcopal Church of the Holy Spirit for running their fish fry. That was a great way to support the church. I did take some time to compliment them on all the service that they do. So we appreciate them for that effort. We did share some fairly big news, which is regarding the de-camp situation. We've gotten a lot of public comment and questions about that. I want to recognize there was a lot of work that went on through the county and other mayors. I was on a phone call with the county executive as well as all the other mayors in this area. And he and the mayor of Nutley have been working pretty heavily to try and lobby essentially to get the service picked up. The box for our service is going to be coming online, but as we have mentioned, NJ Transit is initiating emergency bus service, which will cover the de-camp. Eighty-five percent of the de-camp routes, it is a different set of stops and slightly different route, but it is, it is going to be happening. My understanding is right now that's a three-month commitment is what I've heard with further information to call on that, but that is very good news. So glad to see that happen. And with that, see, is Mr. Coltrane with us this evening?
No, he's not. Mayor Fama and Mr. Coltrane did call in. He's, we did want to report the cherry blossom festival was underway April 1st through the 16th. And he highlighted that already the cherry blossom challenge bike was on April 1st. The cherry blossom 10K run is on April 2nd. And the one-mile fun run is on April 15th. And the website under Essex County Cherry Blossom, the whole schedule is there.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. And then also your be next?
If I had a question that I would have asked the Essex County representative, can I provide that now and you can follow up with Mr. Coltrane?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I was particularly interested in hearing from some residents recently that there may be pickles all being added in Verona Park? And whether or not that is actually happening or part of their parks plan? That was brought up at a direct committee meeting. I will also email Mr. Coltrane, but if you're going to be in communication with them beforehand.
I'll follow up in a moment.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, with your permission, if we could move the resolution to the appointment of the CFO at this time?
Thank you very much.
Move to order business to your resolution.
Be O 63.
K.
K nine.
K nine to.
Okay, sorry, second on this.
Second.
Okay. We do, roll call vote on this for a super. If we just do a voice vote in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much. All right, so we'll now bring up that resolution. This is one that I'm very proud to see us, to see us move this forward. We've had the CFO position filled by Mrs. Mascara's interim for some time, and we've gotten the opportunity to watch her through this fiscal year and budget season. She's been outstanding. She's received her license and we think that it's appropriate to make this permanent. If anyone else has any comments, they might please.
I'm sure this is really exciting moment, and I'm sure it's an exciting moment for your career, and I'm so thankful that you chose to work in Verona. And that you've chosen to advance your career to this point, and congratulations on achieving this milestone, and we are very excited to have you officially be our CFO.
Yes.
If I can jump in, Jen, as I think we said a couple of times before, but you've been a very calming presence at our budget meetings as we're doing our new charity duties with respect to the taxpayer. You have excellent plans. You're, you've really learned a lot and have taught us a lot as well. I think probably the best thing I can say is we're appointing somebody tonight who came up through the ranks. And really learning grew in the township, and it's huge that we can do that. So I will be overjoyed to cast. Anyone else?
I just want to say, you know, echoing some of my colleague's statements, we're very, very proud of you. We're really excited to vote for this resolution this evening. And in particular, I think it's really wonderful to see women in leadership positions, especially in areas of, you know, like finance. So there are fewer women that do that kind of work, and I think it's a tremendous asset. I think you provide an excellent role model for young women in this community. And, and, you know, broadly, there's, there's very few CFOs that are trained in the state right now, and to be a woman doing it, like you should take a lot of pride in that. And, and really, you know, recognize that you are serving as like a tremendous role model for a lot of people. So congratulations, and I'm very excited to vote on this for you.
Thank you.
Certainly, well deserved. I know that going back to last fall and you're, I had asked you, when are you taking the exam next? And you're, I'm studying, I'm studying, I'm studying. So a lot of hard work and a lot of hours and a lot of time went into this. I know that's what you told me. So very well deserved. Congratulations. And I'm sure it comes at a great time because right after budget season, going through those meetings, very knowledgeable, questions, answers, people kept other employees like him shoes is rattling off numbers left and right, she knew them all. Any question that was asked, you answered. And, and one employee actually said to me, there are actually fun meetings to go to. So thank you, Jen. Very well deserved, and I appreciate your hard work for the residents of Verona.
And let me actually make some closing comments. We were at the League of Municipalities last year, and I got a chance to have an extended discussion with Mascara and realized that she absolutely gets it. You know, we've seen this in practice that she really, really cares about the taxpayers' money, about running the government as efficiently as possible, about making sure that all of the administrative requirements are handled properly. You know, in terms of just doing this rule with the seriousness and the effort that it requires, it's just an incredibly important responsibility. There are so many different areas of law that you have to understand and accounting practice. And as we said, there's not a lot of people with this certification in New Jersey. There's, there have been a lot of retirements of municipal CFOs. I just think that we are extraordinarily lucky that we had someone that first off was here, had the smarts and the, you know, the readiness to do it, and then was willing to put in the work to study for this, because I do know that it was, it's a very grueling exam over a lot of areas of practice in this. So I'm just incredibly proud of her. I'm glad we're able to work with her. I agree that the budget processes here was outstanding. What I really liked about it was that the budget we got from the start was very much what we wanted to see. We didn't have to go through and, you know, tinker with it. We, once we understood everything that went into it, I think that all of us saw the amount of work that went into that and sort of, you know, reading the, reading the room as to what the council was looking for. So I think that this is perfect timing. I'm just incredibly proud of this and glad to have her here. So thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to move resolution K nine, please.
Second.
All right, move by Councilman Tambora. Second, I have a second from.
I do have just a quick question though. In this second to bottom, whereas paragraph, it just says that the CFO is going to be appointed effective September 6, 2022?
It was supposed to be January 1st.
It is January.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I don't have the resolutions with me.
It says desires to, when Jennifer Mascara to the position of CFO effective September 6, 2022 for a four-year term. Was that her interim maybe?
It should have been January.
It was effective, but later on it says the four-year term starting January 1st of 2023 to 2020, December 31st, 2026.
Okay.
Should we just strike effective September 6, 2022?
Right, we're retro into January. So, all right, so.
I'll make a motion to just strike that from the effective September 6, 2022.
Is there anything, any reason why we should be striking that? Because it says a four-year term commencing on January 1st, 23. Is there a reason why September 6th, going back, we need to have her as?
No, not that I know of.
Okay, right, that I.
When I originally.
Okay. Oh, oh, yeah. I mean, I think that it was, it looks like a time for her interim, because if you look into like the first or the second, whereas it shows September 30th, 2022. So.
That's why I was all confused.
Yeah, so I think that that probably was leftover from the, okay, yeah, the amount of us gaps. All right, so we have a motion and a second to, to strike that phrase in favor of the alteration. Aye. And, and does the motion on the resolution as altered still stand?
Yes, okay. We've seen that follow comments.
Okay, and I will now enter a public comment on this resolution only. Mr. Diarco, do you have a public comment statement?
Anyone from the public wishing to speak in any manner, please raise your hand. If in attendance via Zoom, you may raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button on your monitor, or if dialing in by phone, that's mine, ones recognized and advised that you are unmuted, clearly state your name for the record, deleting address.
Yes.
Please limit your comment to four minutes and avoid repeating items previously discussed. At the conclusion of your statement, we will address your questions and your comments.
This is related to this resolution only, so. Do you see we do have a hand on Zoom and if anyone wants to say a hand?
We have a hand on Zoom.
Okay, would you please let her commentary into me?
Yeah, this is Kevin Ryan, 92 Elmwood Road in Verona. As someone who had the pleasure of serving with Ms. Mascara, while she was the tax assessor, I just wanted to congratulate her personally on her well-deserved promotion to CFO, and I wish her nothing but the best in her future endeavors. Congratulations, Jennifer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ryan. Anyone else on Zoom or anyone else in the room? Seeing none, I'll now close public comment. Mr. Diarco, would you please say, call the role?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilman Tambora?
Yes.
Councilman McAvoy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Yes.
Mayor Ronan?
Yes, and congratulations again. Thank you, Mr. Diarco.
I have instructions and that resolution will be O 63.
O 63.
Follow all my instructions. On my agenda, Mayor and Council. Your next meeting, awareness of affordable housing piece will be discussed. And we'll have the team here on affordable housing. That will be the attorney, our administrative agent on COA, and our planner, Dakota. They'll be here at your meeting on April 17th, with your permission. The recreation field, in the, in my report, I had a meeting with the designated engineer. Steve and I met with Negli Engineering, the president of Neglia, and reviewed those items. The process will be, after reviewing the items on the list that everybody would like, there will be a formal presentation of concepts to the mayor and council. It will be a formal presentation to the recommendation also. Recreation field usage, usage. Just to advise the mayor and council, I will be looking into bringing on a professional for end of 3/4 on the review of all our recreation fields, what they're used for, how they're used, the frequency of their uses, the overlaps. Try and streamline and make the use of fields more efficient. Seems to be a lot of confusion, at least on my part, and a lot of communications I get with the residents about the use of fields.
Can I ask what sort of professional would do this kind of work? I mean, what?
Similar, similar to what I've done for COA. There are a number of recreation directors that are retired for an interim that I can bring in. I'll give a fresh look at what our fields are. Sometimes and occasionally, you don't see the trees from the forest. So it's a fresh set of eyes around.
Is that going to include analysis of the school fields or just?
Yes, council, all the fields we use.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
And then my agenda, interlocal agreement courts. I have some additional information to help you on this matter. Just to advise you, it's gone through the administrative office of the court, first round is some of the information on the cost savings were. I will, I think Steve put the PowerPoint up on the screen so the public can see it as well.
Maybe we want to tee this up a little, a little bit better. Let me talk about this. One of the things that we have been doing, we obviously have committees that work on various projects. We started looking a little bit deeper into shared services. The state of New Jersey is highlighting court services as a, as a principal target for service sharing. Through the period of COVID, the way the municipal courts work seems to have basically permanently changed. They are, you know, it is largely done remotely now, aside from DUI trials. And my understanding is that it's going to stay that way. And we went to a seminar at League of Municipalities where shared services were discussed, and it was very extensively went into court services. So we did focus on this because we felt that this was an area where we could, where we could do this without substantial changes, you know, substantial impact that would be felt by a large number of people. There's an existing shared court that has been in service for quite a while between North Caldwell and Essex Falls that hosted in North Caldwell. We did, this was not the only one that we went to. We did review a large number of other options, including bringing court services into Verona as well, and sharing it out to other municipalities. We did have discussions with them. We ran through all of our options. We've discussed this with relevant departments internally that interact with the court. The council had been briefed on this in closed session a number of times. We've looked over the cost savings on it. And ultimately, you know, we felt that this was an appropriate step to take, to help us manage our budgets long-term. And, you know, I kind of looked at this and I, and I said, no matter what, in 10 years, I just can't see us, you know, running an independent, an individual municipal court here in the township of Verona. You know, this just seems to be the way that this is going. We have a willing sharing partner. The numbers seem to work, so I was very much in favor and hopefully my colleagues are as well, but I'll, that kind of sets the table a little bit. But we do want to present to the public as to exactly what this is and what it's like. This is a very important factor, so please go ahead.
The first slide, you began this study, I was me coming aboard back in July 1st, 2019, for a shared court, which a feasibility study was done for that. The conclusion in that report was that Verona Municipal Court would benefit financially with a shared service agreement in the first year of operation, while three towns will share more of the financial responsibilities, and the savings can increase in the future years agreements. That estimate attack in 2019 was a savings for Verona of $60,846. Now, the next slide is the Verona budget savings, what you would be looking at in 2023 on the full year scale. The cost of the court for 2023 would nest the entire cost operating personnel, et cetera, would be $276,701. I can thank my excellency of federal for making sure my numbers are correct. And the Verona shared court cost would be $164,806.3, a savings of $111,715.97. So the original 2019 report, which basically indicated your savings would grow over the years is relevant because you've had that many years from 2019 to the present. On the next slide is the annual revenue. I did ask that because in the contract, you would receive the revenue from your fines and all the court activity. Your revenue, and I asked the CFO to get me these 21, 22, and then we projected 23. 21, obviously, was off because of a COVID period, but 2022, it was $124,805. That would be coming in. And in 2023, we got three months worth of numbers, and we took that out for an entire 12 months, and it would estimate at $125,744, approximately exactly what your 2022 numbers were. If you go to the next slide, Steve. The budget savings is $111,715. Your revenue anticipated $125,744. Your benefits of Verona in total would be $237,159.
In terms of an improvement to gas flow?
Yes.
Okay. And that is, you know, that is not a small number, especially with the budget pressures that we have.
$111,000 out of your operating budget would be difficult to achieve.
Right.
Okay.
Please go.
Yeah, so I know that we have a resolution to, to enter into this agreement, and then we may have to make some ordinance changes down the line, but what is the implementation timeline roughly?
The three communities have to, the contracts have redrafted, it's already gone to the law department. They've, they've added it. It's gone to the communities. All three communities have to pass resolutions authorized in the contract. The contracts then go to the AOC for final review to repeat process. Ours is a little more complicated other than the AOC review. We've already received approvals from Department of Service. Okay, and that's the process with the contract. This is the first piece, and everything is in motion based on your last and your previous approval. Did I miss anything?
Thanks, Senator.
Thank you.
Office of Administrative Courts.
Yes.
Thank you.
The review, the review process to be able to do this is pretty intense because they want to make sure that you have a facility, a staff, and an operation that will be able to sustain the requirements. Obviously, you know, we owe people a fair legal process, and we have a lot of oversight over us. So they won't let you do it if the facilities are not there, the plan is not sound. So this has been reviewed rather heavily to ensure that it should, you know, that it will operate as expected. And we did talk through all the financials. We, we were not going to be comfortable giving Mr. Diarco a go-ahead unless we, you know, truly saw the numbers and that it was, you know, it was something that we wanted to move forward with. I think that this for me is, you know, sufficient to be willing to make this change. I'm hoping that everybody else feels similarly about it.
And the Office of the Administrative Courts, AOC, we're going into a shared court service that's improved shared court precedent, which made it somewhat easier.
But they did review it in the context of Verona's case law.
Can you also just speak to and help to clarify for the public? So right now, we have a judge and a prosecutor and an administrator. So what does that look like going forward after we enter into this agreement? You know, who, so it's with three different towns, so who controls that, who pays the benefits? If you can talk a little bit about the personnel side.
That entire piece is all shared by the three communities. So the percentage is based on your volume of court activity, and we have a significant volume of court activity. All of that is up in North Caldwell. If you review the contract, the three communities literally vote on employment pieces. This year, I mean, they're all in place now. Next year and the years coming forward, any new employees, any improvements, the three towns have to build them.
And to further expand on that, they are actually going to be employees of North Caldwell. They are these, the, the employees of the court, while we will be reimbursing pro rata basis of their, of their costs, they will not be Verona's onboard payroll. But we do obviously have to say, there's a lot of elements in this contract that if there are issues or we have problems with the way the court ends up running, say, five years down the line, or even through implementation, that we have addressed. But obviously, since this has been a shared court, it's been very successful. You know, we thought that this would be a great sharing partner, and that's, you know, one reason why.
And the municipal attorney, Mr. Lawyer, checks every contract for clauses, and there is an app was like all our other contracts in this.
Anyone else have comment, comments?
I have a question. In, in the contract, we, there's an identity section here, and it says each municipality shall be required to main its own court code, bank account, ticket books. For each, do we have a, are we keeping an employee just that or?
It'll be in finance because all the funds come into the finance. We receive all of the violation funds are ours. So the court, the judges up there will levy the fines. The fines come back to Verona. The court cost is dealt by the many towns who lost that, any charges.
So our fines come straight to us, and then we get a bill from North Caldwell for our share of the costs.
Exactly.
And I did read about the, you know, ruling averages of construction of a case volume and so on. So it seems fairly laid out in terms of the cost sharing agreement. Anyone else on the council with questions or comments on this matter?
Should we move K two? Can you vote on that now?
We can leave it, okay. Yeah.
Well, I just want to raise a concern about voting on it tonight. So this is a fairly significant change, and it's, it's a big shared service, and we are shedding, you know, major responsibilities and going, you know, into this shared service agreement. I would like the public to just have a chance to digest this and, because it is a very significant thing. And you table this contract and vote on it at the next meetings. I just, in the effort of transparency and allowing the public to, you know, get a preview of what we're going to vote on, this is the first the public is hearing of it. And if it's okay from a personnel and a time contract point of view, we could just wait a meeting so that residents can learn of this change. If they have any specific questions, they can then raise them.
Any comments on whether that's a?
That's if we, we need to do it at the next meeting, one the other, because we have a June 1st.
And, and, you know, sort of my counterargument to this, and, you know, I understand the deputy mayor's concerns, is anytime that you, that you are working on something like this where it involves employees in particular, where it involves contract matters with another community that have been negotiated, et cetera. I feel like once you've gone down that path, I mean, if we were to, for example, vote this down at this point in time, we'd have, you know, I don't necessarily know that that would be the best thing either. We might, I question, you know, how much leeway do we have? Let's assume that someone does bring something up and, you know, after reading the agreement. If we did find something that was unfavorable that we hadn't caught so far, you know, how would that affect us?
The difficulty with that is that agreement is approved by the AOC. So I don't want to say radical elements, but in the agreement, we'd never get past the AOC, which would delay this project even further. It's a standard, it's a pretty standard agreement based off the agreement that's already been approved for North Caldwell Essex Falls. Currently, Verona's been added, and our town attorney has added some items. Currently, Verona's been added and our town attorney has added some items that were agreed upon.
Personally, I I mean, I I don't see a significant harm in tabling the matter until April seventeenth. If the objective is to get resident feedback so that they're aware of a significant change in our government, we've certainly tabled matters. For far less meaningful reasons. And so, I, you know, just to get resident feedback when we've heard recently. That, you know, sometimes we're not, we're moving too quickly and we're not getting the necessary resident feedback. So, you know, I I see no harm in it. If if others want to make a motion to do so, then then I would be prepared to.
We did approach the topic in the last meeting when we were talking about the the grant submission and we did provide some context on that. And nobody did come to this meeting with questions, so putting it out there that we provided limited information and nobody came with questions. Today, we're providing more information, so just wanted, that want to be clear, this is not the first time we're. Mench change the concept of this to the public. This is the first time we're providing more detail to the public. So, last meeting was a bit of a surprise. I don't see a lot of folks interested, but my only concern is if we delay this, it's revenue. But if we're willing to sacrifice some of that revenue for for that. That's it. Remember that we have to have these other municipalities also vote on it, so it's a process. Has to get reviewed, so the longer time you take, the less revenue that we'll get this year.
Sorry, is that, is that accurate? Are we losing revenue if we vote on this on April seventeenth, Mr. Diarcio?
No, April seventeenth would be, I I wouldn't go beyond April seventeenth because then we, you know, missed that June first date and I have to do a whole. Another issue with civil service and the other towns that are sending in agreements have to go to the AOC, I think. April seventeenth would be your last. Window to do this.
So, I guess my question would be, let's, you know, procedurally, again, let's assume that, you know, someone comes to us, you know, at the, either someone comes to us in the interim or comes to us at the April seventeenth meeting. And says, I've reviewed the agreement, this should really, really be in it. Then, I don't know, do we have the time after that before reading that June first that we did need to make a change to this?
Depending on what was indicated, they they would liken it. Not sure you can do that.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm, you know.
Well, it would better for it to be accurate than wrong. I mean, again, we live in a town full of talented residents and I know. Councilman Tamboro talks about transparency in this all the time. We. Yes, at our last meeting, we had one brief sentence where we discussed very quickly that we were applying for a grant to study the courts. We actually never really disclosed that we were already far along and about to announce that, you know, we had reached an agreement to combine these courts.
My recollections actually did say that.
Okay, it's, you know, we can go and and I I would prefer to wait just so that we can get feedback from the public, but again, we, you know. We can, so I'm going to make a motion. Well, it's part of consent agenda, so I'm not sure.
Right, it's not, it's not our table for passing.
It's not a passage on the table, right? I would like to wait just two weeks. It's nothing nefarious except to make sure that the public has a chance to. Really be able to comment before we make a final decision here.
Yeah, I mean, I I can understand that. I understand both sides of the argument here. I do think that that's fair and we do try and. Get public comment as much as possible. I do think that, you know, sometimes this is one of the larger structural decisions about how we operate our town. Where we also, you know, the council has to be willing to stand behind its decisions as well and its reasoning behind them. So, I would be comfortable in either direction. I mean, obviously, we've vetted this very well and we, you know. You know, if I were to vote it, I would vote for it. I would basically say that's because I've discussed this and I'm comfortable with it and I feel it's the right direction to go. But I do, you know, I do see, you know, we do try and gather more public input rather than less public input here. My only concern is, you know, what we can do with that public input. I just want to make sure that if someone comes to us, I mean, honestly, if someone has a serious concern with this. It feels like it should come to us in between the meetings, then at the meeting would probably be more appropriate because. I don't want to have people come up here and give public comment about it, make a very valid comment. And let's go, you know, that's great, but we'll have to go back for a revision of the agreement after we've already passed it. So, you know, I like it. If we want to truly have a meaningful process, I would say that. We need to ask for any public comment to be sent to the council between now and the next meeting. Obviously, anyone is welcome to appear at that meeting, but if you want us to be able to truly take the time to consider and see if we have missed anything in the agreement, that's the the way to do it. Any other comments on this? We're still in the township manager report. Do you have any other?
No. Close session, so we'll have.
Is Mr. Yolken?
Good evening. Apologize, I got this out a little bit later than anticipated, but it's been kind of a crazy couple of weeks. So, I'll start with grants. We did submit. The congressional projects for the well projects, well projects for three different applications for Senator Booker Hernandez. And then Congressman Payne's office. So, those are in. They said we probably won't know until, I think, towards the end of the summer. Around August or so. That's if they're on time.
Pfas remediation and claret pump?
Not, not the claret pump, just the Pfas remediation, yeah. They said, working with Millennium, that you can submit multiple projects, it's better to focus on one, especially when it's a large ass. Pearl, we are moving along. It doesn't look like there's a lot of action up there right now, but there there will be. Soil remediation is planned to take place in the next week or two, so there's going to be a lot of trucks up there. We'll get some messaging out. And we may have to close the road, but it shouldn't really affect too many residents up there. It should be for a short time, just for staging of the dump trucks to get the soil out. We're trying to schedule it so it's one or two days where they could just come in, get it out, and then we're done with that and just keep everything else on site. So, I'll keep you updated as that progresses. The pool construction, I went over there and visited today. Again, it looks great. There's a lot happening. They're starting to. Do the finished grading right now. We did have a one change order, which included. Some drainage, rerouting some drainage pipes that we found, actually, we're going to be above grade. So, we just wanted to obviously sink those farther down. So, that was one change order. We actually switched up. We swapped out an element for the transition from the baby pool into the splash pad, so there'll be more jet streams there now. So, it was around a thirty, thirty-one thousand dollar change order, which we do have covered in the funding. And then also just additional concrete and fill, concrete pricing's gone up too, so that was one of the other costs for that.
What was the reason for the change of the element, the transitional element you mentioned?
Talking with the contractor and then really looking at the plans, they had basically just bubblers planned that would come up and he said. And sent us some videos too, working in other pools, it really doesn't do much. And where they had it positioned. It was only going to come up, you know, maybe a few inches out of the water. And he said, it's really, you could do better. So, we we went with some higher powered jets. So, now it'll have kind of nice arc, like an archway as you come out of the pool.
Does it have any impact schedule?
No, not at all. Actually, I think it's already in place.
And can you tell me how about thirty-one K roughly was the the change, the change order value for the design change as opposed to the?
That was about fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, all right, so out of those changes, this is that that voluntary change is essentially de minimis.
Yeah, it was really mainly the concrete costs were the bulk of it and then sinking the drainage lines and we had to reroute some electrical conduit.
Okay, and as far as the concrete costs go, was that, is there a materials price adjustment in the in the purchasing contract? Is there, you know, why are we exposed to the commodity pricing?
That was open, we actually added some too, and the way it was specked out in one section. It calls for four inches of concrete, but it actually turns out once they opened it up, we actually need six inches of concrete and additional fill.
Okay. Any other questions on the pool matter?
Mayor, it's amazing. One of the issues we're we're really looking at will be. Our designs, projects that we have out to bid because questions we've had, so we're running into these. These kind of anomalies, which Steve has been very attentive to, they're being adjusted.
Right, I just. Right, I, you know, general, I I always, you know. My only concern with when I hear change orders and I recognize that you hold, you know, you carry money for change orders in every project. A change order is always more expensive than it having been in the in the bid set. So, you know, that's where, I know that not everything gets caught all the time, but, you know, that's always my, my preference is the more of these things can be made right in the bid set before, you know.
Yes.
The preference.
I can agree with you.
Deputy Mayor, did you have a comment or?
No, so they're mostly engineering, because that was my question when you get to the like round up the teams.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay, please continue.
So, next, I did, after the last meeting, unfortunately, I wasn't here to answer some of the questions, just kind of wanted to quickly, not to go too far into purchasing and and. You know, municipal, you know, public purchasing laws, but. So, a lot of the times you'll see the contracts come up for non-fair and open awards for anything above seventeen-five, so seventeen thousand. Five hundred dollars, kind of that magic number for for pay-to-play, which is why then it gets kicked to an actual meeting.
Can we go a little bit more, we're using too much jargon here.
Yep, sorry.
And when we say non-fair and open, that's not quite unfair, so let's explain what.
Right, so there's, there's a distinction. It's not, it's not unfair, so a fair and open process forbidding. It's like your public bids, where it's fully advertised, it's noticed, it sits, you know, for a while. You have submissions, it's awarded by the governing body, you know, lowest responsive and responsible bidder. So, here's where the law gets a little crazy. The bid threshold used to be seventeen thousand five hundred. Which is why that pay-to-play number was also set at that. Now, the bid threshold has continued to decline. They've never gone back and actually changed the pay-to-play law. It should be in line. It just makes sense that way.
And the pay-to-play law is the one that governs them doing the reporting to us on the contributions they've paid.
Anything after seventeen-five, they have to fill out specific paperwork and it's, you know. Publicize any contributions, political contribution.
Okay.
So, then that number is seventeen-five to forty-four thousand, forty-four thousand is the bid threshold, so anything in between that is a window contract. Which is why then it appears before you for for award. Now, for a fair and open project, it has to be awarded by the governing body. You don't, I can actually award technically as the PPA for a non-fair and open contract. But past practice, we like to, you know, make the governing body aware and let you award those contracts. So, that's why a lot of those come up. Some of them are last minute. We do actually track them. We have a full contract system within our financial software admins. We we have a spreadsheet that we track every year. With that threshold, we don't always hit it with certain vendors. So, if we're not going to come near that threshold, we don't send them paperwork, we don't award it by resolution. So, if they're only, we're only going to spend sixteen thousand dollars with them in a year, no paperwork needed. We do our quote process and that's it. So, we try and watch, we have our main vendors, we know every year we're a hundred percent going to go over that threshold. So, we do send them the paperwork early and as we get close, we'll put it on a meeting.
I just want to say, thank you for explaining that complexity and managing the complexity. Because it's a lot and I know a year and a half ago, you weren't really managing this piece, right? It was managed by a previous manager and you took this on. And so, are there any learnings you've had now that you're fully in it? That how, where you're looking forward, that you're going to try to make it easier on the organization, the vendors and us or?
Yeah, so there's a lot of changes that have happened, but the biggest thing is we have a set contract module within admins. We never utilized that before. Now, every pay-to-play, every contract that we award, we are. In putting into that contract module. So, we're all learning that. It's a new process for everybody, even the finance office. But so far, it seems to be working pretty well. So, we have implemented that, trying to streamline that process. It's a little bit different than whatever it's used to, but it will make it easier for us.
I would say the use of a software contract management tool is another thing you've checked off of my list of things I've wanted here for a very long time, so thank you.
Yeah, we do have that in play. We are getting used to it. I think by next year, we'll be, it'll be nice and smooth.
There's a, there's a, there's a number of elements in the admins software and and the township staffs are starting to use them.
Yeah, we know it's very powerful. We have a lot of very powerful software tools, but, you know, rolling them out through every department and every operation. You know, it benefits us, but I understand that it takes.
And as we have onboarded new people, it's been easier to just start with that training right away instead of trying to. Change everybody's process.
I agree.
All right, the community center playground. So, we had. The bid package kind of all together, the specs were finally done. We were getting ready. With some transition internally, we, I sat down with Boswell, our township manager junior, to give it a read-through and give us any comments. They highlighted a lot of sections that they just had some concerns over. Really just about ambiguity, so they're concerned that it would cause higher numbers to come in because there weren't set quantities for some of the stuff. So, it was kind of open-ended in some areas, so they were like us to really zero in and narrow down. So, I did ask them for a proposal to. Maybe not a brand-new package, bid package, but to really go through so we can make the corrections now before we put it out to bid and then. You know, get mixed responses back.
And then this kind of jumps back to what I was just talking about, change orders and things going into bid sets. You know, in terms of process, when we have something designed at the township and intends to build by an architect, et cetera. How do we get from there to basically saying we've got a final bid package and the township is willing to release? You know, against looking at ways to avoid change orders and, you know, over, you know, billing for excess, et cetera. How do we actually manage that?
So, just a lot of meetings with myself. Usually, you know, if it's a road project, we'll meet with their team of engineers. Myself or the public purchasing. Now, we've started, which hadn't necessarily happened in the past, making sure finances at the table also. So, they have the input at the beginning. Just, we've built a team around it. DPW staff, our super superintendent of public works is there, so we all have eyes on it, we read through it and and make markups and comment. Just to try and eliminate. I mean, there's always going to be something that comes up, but at least we could try and get it upfront.
I know you said ASAP, but how long is it going to take for, hopefully, that we can get out to bid?
We're hoping to have this live and out to bid by the end of the month.
Is it possible that the recreation committee could get an update on April seventeenth? Because I will say that they were under the expectation that this was done and that this was going out to bid like last year. And they were kind of surprised at the most recent meeting when it came up. In the director of community services presentation that it hadn't gone out to bid and there wasn't really a meaningful explanation of why. So, if they could maybe get like an explanation of why, that could maybe be very helpful to them.
Sure.
Thank you.
Given some of the, given some of the reoccurring issues on projects that have been out. Steve and I discussed those concerns on project. Primary engineer hasn't waited on and wanted them reviewed again, so I don't have. Issues and headaches on these projects. Steve has literally led that one forward and done a great job on it. And there'll be a little delay, but it'll be in front of you every week after it's awarded.
Yeah, we're hoping once that is awarded, the construction shouldn't be too long, so we're hoping by the fall to have a, that playground in finally.
I was going to say, it's a playground, you know, we're not.
Yeah, it's.
Rebuilding the Golden Gate.
And we have a lot of the elements already, so.
I just hope that we, you know, those elements have been in a safe place and are still usable and. Because they were donated by community partners that we need to repair or related.
They're, they're all still wrapped up in plastic and.
Yeah, I mean, they've been in a closet for a very long time, so it's not great, but when it's built, it's going to be wonderful.
Yes, it is. We will get it built. Moving on to road reconstruction projects, I hope you saw the notice go out today, but the Anne Cypress Willow project is back and underway. They're in there working today, doing all the concrete work, so the Belgium block and all the sidewalks are getting done. They're moving pretty, pretty quickly, so hopefully, weather cooperates and we'll keep that project moving. We did hand deliver letters. We sent an alert Verona out this morning. The schools were contacted, FN Brown was contacted to let them know of the project and to put the word out to all the parents about pulling down Anne Street. At times, so we are going to be posting that, no parking. Any major changes like that, we will deliver letters to. Might not be the whole development, but at least that section of block that they're planning on closing.
And how long is this expected to take at this point?
Hoping another couple of months.
So, it's going to take another three months, four months?
Possibly. There is, we're looking at additional water main work right now, but we're working on that update.
What would be driving the additional water main work?
Just to finish out. Just to finish out the stretch. So everything's done around one side of the loop. Um. And as they were going, kind of suggesting, you know, maybe if we have things open. We might want to finish. Uh, there's one one section that wasn't going to be brand new like all of the rest of us.
And I mean, I know that you know, that's part of obviously our asset management plan for our water systems proactive replacement piping. The only thing I would say in this is obviously um the residents there have been. You know, concerned in dealing with the construction project for for a while now, and we do want to be sensitive to them as well. It's just, you know, anything that we can do to. Run sort of parallel work streams and otherwise keep this project going. I mean, I know that's what the contractor is supposed to do, but that's something that, you know, we should be leaning on them.
Yep.
Um, you know, I just, you know, it would be nice to wrap this up as quickly as we possibly can because saying another three, four months is a lot.
Yeah.
I was gonna bring this up in my council report, but. Um, I think we have a lot of room to improve on communication with the residents in the neighborhoods. Um, and if this is the one for another response or if you don't have the definite timeline. I asked for this before and it didn't happen. Uh, I'm going to make another request. Meeting be scheduled with the residents to um fill them on the progress and a better timeline than we have it. So they can ask questions, understand, understand how road closures will affect them, but the schedule, if that's going to be. Their active residents in this neighborhood um that want information. Um, and it's something that we need to provide. Um, that is, I think you both know, I did reach out to administration and ask for more enhanced communication. Um, but it's something that I think we need to have. Communication that is beyond some letters. I think we need to have. A meeting where they can ask questions because right now the streets are very frustrated. If they're getting to the point that they're reaching out to council for information means that whoever's reaching out to administration um is getting the information they need. Um, so if we can get a Zoom meeting where they can ask questions, even if only use a half an hour. If we can just get something and notice that out there, they don't make a long way. Um, and the other thing I would ask related to this is that. We have other road construction projects coming up. Um, we need to use this and do a postmortem. On this, a half or action study to determine what we can do better as far as resident facing related to our projects.
Right, and I mean, to to fault what councilman said, I think that people are really looking for two way dialogue. They want, they may have suggestions or questions. They may, they live on that street, they know it well. Um, you know, their goal and I, they've been reaching out to us and staying, you know, their goal is to minimize any ongoing disruption to their lives in their neighborhood. It's fair for them to have the concerns that they have.
Yeah, completely agree. And uh, obviously our initial communications that went out. We were shooting for March fifteenth. Um, I know some of the frustration is why weren't we there on March fifteenth? It was snowing um and very rainy that week, so we should have gotten a letter out saying we're not going to hit March fifteenth. So I agree with that. We'll definitely improve as we go.
If you can have a meeting, if you can get that to the council.
Following up on the road reconstructions though, um, what is the timing of the other projects? Because I know that we have grant funding in Limbo as well. So it's going to take a bit longer for Anne and Cypress. Are we moving along with Durwin and? And the other road reconstructions we have planned?
Yeah, nothing. There are no delays. Um, with Durwin is the next one going. Um, they're actually. We're doing some work internally, um, just because we checked some of our our belt boxes, the curb boxes. Um, so we're actually going to do that a ahead of them and we're doing that um with our DPW staff. So they are working there now. They're not closing down the road or anything. Um, all the tree work is done. So we're just kind of waiting. Um, we met with the contractor recently, so I think they're ready to get in there and get started.
Okay, and then Whitney and Boston, are they still on track as well?
Yes, we're that we're in the design phase for that one. We didn't have plans for that one. We had plans already with um Durwin. But um, Whitney and Boston area is getting planned now.
How does that affect the grant funding that's been allocated for them?
Um, those were fine. That's a brand new one. That one's fresh. Um, so we're good on that and we're still on on time for the Anne Cypress and Durwin.
And I just, I'm sorry, I just want to add on Durwin. Um, you know, I met a lot of neighbors on that street that are very upset about the trees that came down. And as everyone knows, I sit on the shade tree committee. I think there's still room for opportunity there to make sure that the shade trees get replanted and. We have a clear strategy with the shade tree commission and the township and then communicating to residents using Councilman Tamboro's. You know, oversight and or strategy that he laid out because the residents really are upset about the trees. Um. In particular, actually the smaller ones. Um, so they would like, they don't understand what the replanting strategy is going to be. So I think there's opportunities there and maybe an opportunity to use some of our shade tree volunteers to also help with communication. So that's something we can talk about.
Yes, we did meet with the shade tree, um, the co chairs and kind of lay that out. Unfortunately, everything they wanted to do, we couldn't because the bid was already worded and and out and orders were placed with the contractor, but we did lay out a plan for the future. So um, you're Bolton, Whitney, there's not going to be as much tree work done in that development. Uh, but anything going forward now, we did set up a new process with them and they will be involved um with the replanting.
And Steve, isn't Durwin, or isn't that a different contractor than Anne Cypress?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, so they.
So two different projects, one will not affect.
And I know the the pre-construction meeting with Durwin, I I'm almost positive that Chuck went over.
We we did and we.
Tree replacement, you know, he he explained that all those trees were coming down. And that they would get an opportunity in a letter to replant later on.
Yeah, I would encourage if people are listening to attend that pre-con meeting because there was a lot of information giving out there before the project. Um, which did go over the tree species. We actually had printouts that we provided.
I think the challenge in anything Councilman Timbora got to it is, you know, people's schedules are busy and, you know, and so if they miss that meeting, then are there other opportunities for communication mid project? And towards the end, and my, and thank you so much for that shade tree update. I think it's also. That advocacy role of making sure that we, so I know in our contracts, we have a certain amount of shade trees that we budget to replant. We want to hit those targets. We want to replant every single tree that we have. We have allotted for. And if the residents are like. Maybe if they don't understand, they may not ask for one or blah blah blah. We just need to make sure we replant those streets.
Yeah, one thing, just a quick note on that, not to get too sidetracked, but um, that was brought up and. Would happen, previous councils decisions, I guess, wanted to change that where we just, we used to replace every single tree on a road project. Um, and that's working with the shade tree, kind of what we decided to do going forward now. Um, if that's what the council wishes, previous councils. Change that up and put it on the homeowner to request it.
Right.
Because if, right, if we're planting a tree and they don't really want it, they're not going to take care of it. It's dead and then we end up pulling it out anyway. So what we are doing, um, I met with one of the co chairs today, actually on this. Was they created some literature around proper watering and maintenance to go out. So we're going to work on a postcard that will also go out. In the Anne Cypress development to let people know this is your tree to maintain. So you do have to water it. Here's what you should do. Um.
That's good.
Steve, can you make a note also that we have to put protection on the base of these trees for deer?
Yep.
Because they're getting, I want to talk to someone on Conservancy, they put some cherry trees in the park. And the bark is ripped off the bottom of. And they're just going to die.
Yeah, we noticed that with Linwood, actually, um, just noticed that the rubbing took a toll on those trees. Um, so we did end up putting the piping on them to protect them. And we do know now, after every project, we will actually just go in and do that. Our um, our staff did that DPW. They actually have to come off now, but um, we will be putting those on.
Yeah.
And we were talking about, which we'll have to price out a little bit. Is um, just including the bags for the trees in the bid spec. So that's one of those things we are looking at. Can we just, you know, for buying in bulk, just put it in there, the contractor buys them and installs them when you put the tree in. Probably be a big help, a lot easier to just have a resident fill that bag up instead of having to go out and water for a half hour for.
Yeah.
A year, yeah.
Well, we're learning and I appreciate that feedback, Lou, and also bringing in our are very talented at words and commissions to help, you know, with these and really working as a team. So we're getting there.
Yeah.
So and they are, it's a lot of projects to manage at once.
All right, um, some upcoming events, we will be putting a notice out, but our shredding event, which was originally scheduled for Saturday, April sixteenth. Um, we had to change, we did change up with the company we use. Um, so we'll be putting messaging out, but that's going to be changed to May sixth, which is also Saturday. Be holding that from eight to twelve. In the pool parking lot.
That the last shredding thing was changed too. So let's just. I think it was this municipal one, it was with one of the groups. So just to figure it out there that if we can, a lot of people didn't know. Um. So would however, put that out, please put it out because if we want people to shred, um, it may be a little. I'm excited about it being changed.
Yeah.
Again.
Um, yeah, and just to note, they had some changeover at the company, so our contact sales person there did not have us scheduled on the right day.
It's easier just to cut paper with a big machine.
Yeah. The September date is still on as scheduled in the um insert that went out. That's one of the problems is we could put it out everywhere. It's still in that insert.
Yeah.
So. Um, and then we have the Essex County Home Improvement Program. Uh, we're actually going to host that in Verona. Um, there's two dates just to accommodate schedule, so they're both the same workshop. Um, but do encourage residents to attend. It is April twenty fifth in the evening and then uh Saturday morning on April twenty ninth. And that's going to be held in the ballroom of the community. It did not include that, but here, actually I do, I have the flyer. Uh, so on Tuesday, April twenty fifth, it's going to be six to eight PM and on Saturday, April twenty ninth, it'll be ten AM to twelve PM. And do want to encourage, if anyone has questions, you really have to contact Essex County, not the township. Um, you could call them at nine seven three six five five zero two zero zero. Um, I'm going to skip every field. Joe kind of covered most of that. Um, Friends of Verona Parks, quick update. Um, just waiting back for the five oh N C three paperwork to come back. We did submit that. Um, and also did reach out to two other residents. So we do have a board of three people right now, which is what we're going to go with. For the time being till things get established. Um, working right now on the Articles of Association to get that up and running. So we are going to have our first meeting pretty soon. Um, so hopefully you have some feedback there. And just uh in response to the swap that happened, the sports swap did raise just over a thousand dollars um. For Friends of Verona Parks.
So is the, are planned to expand this board to more than three?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Um, probably see.
More of a a public process encouraging residents to buy?
Right, yeah, for, it'll be a full blown launch and campaign and everything. Uh, but for right now, just to get things set up because it's early stages, we're just going to keep it small.
Okay.
And at some point I will be stepping down from my role on that and um just kind of attending meetings as a non voting member.
Okay.
Uh, the Tenshaw Forester, I know we have a resolution on for that. Um, so I don't know if there's any discussion you want to do now or we could save that for later. Um, did send you the RFPs. We had two responses. We did do an RFP, which is a fair and open process. Um, so we will. Our recommendation was to um appoint both foresters, um, but we could talk about that more later.
Yeah, Mayor.
Which one?
Um, yeah, but two responding firms, uh. We absolutely need at least the two because uh one resident waiting, uh, one's not available. We could go to the other. You know, the. Maybe in in the order of your preferences, but uh discussing with the shade tree commission. So we do have two for now.
And to clarify on the building, this is built, the services are being built based on utilization. Uh, so we don't have to, there's basically eyeing us and eyeing and billing us. We only pay them when we use them.
The only payment we use.
Okay.
Correct. And we'll try to, when we are using them. Schedule. Smartly so that we can utilize, you know, if they're, we don't want to bring somebody out and pay them for an hour if it's fifteen minutes of work. So that's the the thing, whoever is going to be in charge of that, just making sure that we could put eight houses or in in two hours or whatever.
Completely understand.
Right, yeah, that would be the goal. The start is going to be, we'll have to work it out, but yeah, absolutely. Yeah, they are, they're going to be paid their hourly rate.
So once we tell people that. These are days, you know, it may be a week, but. We're going to try and get things going.
Um, and we do plan to meet. Once we have them on, uh, meet with staff internally, um, DPW and our temporary zoning officials and also the shade tree commission. Um, just a quick update on zoning. Um, it's kind of been scrambled recently, but we do have two temporary. Um, representatives in the zoning office handling all of our zoning issues right now um through Boswell Engineering. Um, they have started, they started last week. There will be in Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursdays from eight thirty AM to twelve thirty PM.
They do enforcement as well, Steve, or just?
The enforcement side is going to be handled by another employee that was appointed.
Yes. I guess advising is assuming the enforcement responsibilities of the zoning laws. That falls under the construction official, which is fine. So you you're, you haven't had a speed yet.
Already responsible for, you know, municipal code enforcement or, you know, zoning code enforcement is just, you know, a different area.
Yeah, yeah, and then, I mean, I've also met with staff about um violations in the township. Um. Enforcement officers normally issue a warning and to correct the violation. If it's not corrected, I'm dealing with the piece of property now and talk to the construction official. If it's not corrected yet for the first morning and there's reasonable grounds to give a second warning, that's fine. But if you have to issue a summons, then you issue a summons every day that the violation exists. And they're following those directives now.
Um, quick update Congressman Payne's office, uh, been going back and forth with them for a couple of weeks now. They did reach out. Um, obviously DC is a little bit chaotic right now, so they asked to just put things on hold for at least a good month or so. Um, just with scheduling and Congressman is down in DC a lot more, so. Hopefully we will keep on, but it is nice to have that communication. They are reaching out to us proactively, so.
We have to tie them with a pancake breakfast.
Yes.
Yes.
I like, what do you think?
And that's one of the main reasons. It's not just a quick visit. He does want to make sure the Army Corps is there and we line everything up and do it right if if we're going to set it up. Um, we talked about the D Camp New Jersey Transit issue. Um, I do just want to put this out there because I know you had a lot of feedback. I know I was answering questions too on our social media platforms. About the jitney service. Um, you know, we kind of were hoping that New Jersey Transit was going to step in, which they did, which is great. Um, but the question is still out there about a Verona jitney service. Um, so I know. A lot of this was pre, some of you, some of you have seen it, but I have done. At least two, I think maybe three studies on the jitney service. Um, we've done surveys. Um. And actually, you know, some traffic, informal traffic studies, worked with some other towns. So I just want to put that out there that we have looked at this before. It has not been found to be feasible in Verona. Um, just with the ridership and costs, it didn't really make sense. Um, happy to look at it again if that. Is what the council would like.
We.
Share that data.
Yeah.
You know, I think share back what we had already seen. I was around when we did that and, you know, one of the big concern that we had was if you're going to sort of insert yourself into someone's commute, you need to have the ability to be. You know, a reliable service. So we need to reconsider if a driver is out sick, if a bus is broken down, et cetera. But there simply. You know, it wasn't going to be at a price that people were going to be willing to pay. Um, and it was also going to be too high of a cost for us to be willing to be able to subsidize. Um, it's just one of those things where unfortunately we just kind of didn't have the scale. Um, it might be interesting to see now with the lower volume of people going, you know, is there is a more infrequent. Service on a smaller scale, something that's, you know, worthwhile to run people over to a train station without really running like a bus loop. You know, that would be another question I'd have.
Definitely.
I I would like to see the prior studies and and just out of curiosity, were you looking at all of the Montclair stations or just Bay Street?
So we asked, um, which one people would prefer and Bay Street was at the top and then actually Glen Ridge was, I think, the number two station.
So with that in mind, I do have some concerns about a jitney service because we have the Route twenty nine bus that just goes through. And it's less than three dollars to get to the Bay Street station on that bus service and it runs fairly regularly. So like, to what extent are we just duplicating an existing service that exists?
And that was one of the findings, actually. I would agree with you.
Well, that's the thing, right? Like at this point, I think a lot of residents are not familiar with the twenty nine service or aren't thinking about it. So again. If you just pay for a train monthly pass, it covers the cost of the bus. So the bus would be free.
Mm hmm.
And um, or at least included in your monthly pass. So not really free, but nonetheless, it's reducing the cost of your train pass then. Because it's covering both. So I mean, unless the jitney is taking them to Upper Montclair Train Station or the Montclair State University Train Station, which. Runs less frequently, you get more trains out of Bay Street, I think, than those other stops. So I mean. If if the purpose is to avoid the cost of parking or the challenges with parking at those train stations, stations, the twenty nine goes to Bay Street and to the Newark Light Rail and to Penn Station. So you can get to all those. They even have an express service that goes down to. So you can get to all those, they even have an express service that goes down to eighty. So those, those may be the better options, like you can take the express down to Penn Station on the twenty nine for less than four dollars.
Uh, I think residences are not aware of those options, and maybe, you know, obviously, we, we can't do New Jersey Transit's marketing for them, but maybe we do have a responsibility to put more of that out there. Cuz obviously residents, I think they perceive just jitney as being faster, but I would like to see the past research that you did, um, obviously it's pre-pandemic, so. But I think that's great, and I also think there are opportunities, though, working through the county possibly. To explore if, you know, again, there, if there's some difference between the twenty nine and, you know, maybe people want something faster. You know, could we collaborate with the county to do a Bloom Court Avenue line, so it's not on Verona, cuz I think we're just too small to maintain this.
On the, on the coal behalf of transit, they did offer us their G R staff and, and so on, it might be something interesting for us to ask and create some. Verona-specific materials with some options and that we can help them, uh, rather. Any advice on what options to use come from New Jersey Transit, rather than internally, in case something happens or whatever, you'd have to update your, um. New structure, but I think they're trying to do whatever they can to accommodate the camp riders specifically, so might be worth a call down there. Uh, to see if they can make up just a couple options, because until Councilman Holland brought it up, I had nobody else expressed to Penn Station, which would service the path. Uh, which is huge. Right, I mean, the big point that I've seen is people are concerned about the cost of the boxcar service, which is higher than de-camp.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, that is adding a substantial amount of money to people's commutes, and they may simply not know that there's another option that's already there, already running. Um, you know, at a much lower cost.
Well, I mean, again, tomorrow, this, the pa, the New Jersey Transit page, the New Jersey Transit dot com backslash de-camp will be live. I checked it today to see if maybe they released it a day early, but they did not.
Yeah.
So, um, so the schedules and the fares and everything will be coming out tomorrow, and I am really curious to see, I mean, what they implied on the call, which I, uh, was on with the councilman. Was that they, um, this was gonna be, um, cost less than de-camp. And I'm really curious to see how quick that bus gets into port authority, so. It sounds like there, there is a plethora of options, and I agree that we should be working with New Jersey Transit to like push them out more. And if we ever do get to our new resident handbook, which um is hard because we have so many pressing projects, but that really needs to be an element of it too. Or maybe a webpage on public transit options, so that we can at least link people to the lines, um. Then New Jersey, and link them back to New Jersey Transit, but say these are the lines that go through Verona.
I think that'll be in particular, um, of particular importance when we have affordable housing projects coming in this community, especially with the twenty nine.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, I'll definitely reach out, see if we could get Verona-specific information.
Our, our prior jitney questionnaire and surveys, they were done before we got the jitney service, correct? Cuz we did, didn't, we had that one service after our survey, we tried it, we had a trial period with that company. And the major problem we had, and we heard it from everybody, it worked, it was fine at the, in the morning hours. Cuz people were on a schedule going in, but the schedule coming out was so different for so many people that they weren't making money and they just canceled.
Right, and that was actually set up through Caldwell.
Yeah.
The realtor in Caldwell.
Yeah.
Um, and I think they even said, I'll double check on that, but they're, they just didn't have the riders.
Yeah.
They really had a handful of riders, um, and I think one from Verona.
Yeah.
Okay, um, just real quick on the others, um, our G I S system, we are trying to expand that, uh, we have a couple. Staff members in D P W, uh, specifically the Water Department that are really taking the lead on that, um, and trying to expand, we've been purchasing some G P S equipment. And now it's just making the connection between that equipment, tagging, um, you know, whatever we're doing, whether it's a valve box in the street, which is what they're doing a lot of. Um, and then actually getting it onto a, a good G I S uh platform. So we are hoping to have that kinda launched in the, in the pretty near future, they are actively going out and tagging things right now. Um, and then there will be a public facing side to all that, to all the mapping. Um, Colliers Engineering, they have gotten started on the Emergency Response Plan and the Risk Resilience Assessment. Um, for the township, which will bring us into compliance with the E P A um laws. And then lastly, the Community Garden just opened up this weekend, so Sunday, they had a great day, they had a really nice turnout. Um, we had well over a hundred and twenty-five applications come in again this year. So, um, we are talking about expansion again, since things have changed, um, so hopefully more on that soon.
Good.
Okay, great.
Don't have any questions from the union?
All right, thank you.
You are, do you have anything? Yes, all right, there were a couple other items that I did want to mention, like the two, uh, earlier on, um, I believe I did not mention the Women of Impact Panel, uh, through, yeah, I'm not gonna steal too much of your thunder, because I know you're gonna want.
Where you got?
She's, she's holding the brochure in her hand, but I just, you know, I had the opportunity to attend that, and I just thought the conversations were outstanding, um, you know, looking forward to that being, you know. Continuing to occur, because I think that was really valuable, and if the turnout part was fantastic, so I really enjoyed that, and then also, I'm sorry, I'm gonna steal one more from you.
That's good.
All right, the Verona Public Library Art Auction, yeah, John McAvoy and I, yeah, I have some stuff either yesterday, I know you were there as well. Um, we had a chance to, to meet with the artist Catherine Gray, and it looks like it's working out pretty well for the library so far, is it April fifth, the C N date, I think? I think so, whatever it is, check and get your, uh, your art, uh, now or miss out. Um, there was one other item that, uh, did get brought up to me, it was actually not from a Verona resident, from a West Orange resident, um, on the portion of Howell that's in West Orange. Uh, they just wanted to bring to our attention, uh, that the West Orange Affordable Housing or Construction of Apartments, uh, down slope from there. Uh, they put in their D E P permits for, uh, wetlands issues, uh, and I looked at the plan set for that, and it does, there might be some single-family blocks that are plotted out on the. Unoccupied side of Howell, um, they are in West Orange's jurisdiction, but my opinion on this is that it's still, the project should still be reviewed by Verona's engineering to determine if there's any adverse impacts. On our community and our neighborhoods, because it is very just, you know, it's, it's a diagonal border there, I think, on Howell and a couple of those streets that are part of them or what, or part of them or Verona. So we don't want to be left out of this process, that would be, it's not happening in our, within our borders, so.
I'll send that over to Baswell.
All right. And that is all I have for this evening, uh, we'll move over to, uh, Councilmember Park, that's in there.
Okay, great, um, and I will be brief, I wanna thank Verona Fire Department for assisting, um, one of my neighbors on my block this weekend, they were. There for several hours, um, really working through a, uh, complex issue, and I just. I think every fire truck in Verona may have been on my block, um, I do wanna thank them, they were there for a very long time. Um, providing excellent service, um, they're just an amazing group of volunteers. Um, as the mayor mentioned, the Multicultural Inclusion and Accessibility Advisory Committee. Did have their first, um, Women of Impact Panel event, uh, it was a huge success, I wanna thank. Uh, our library director, Claudine Pascal, for the idea, this was something she did in Caldwell. And for her oversight of our volunteers who planned the event, they took nominations from the public and then evaluated them. Um, and picked, um, the, um, panel that included Rosemary Sichano, um, Gabe Toral Patel, Pamela Crisco, Julia Prouse. And Catherine Tamchek. Um, the women, um, it was moderated by a volunteer from the Junior Women's Club and from the, um. Multicultural Inclusion and Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting, it was really fantastic, uh, conversation. Um, as the mayor said, and, um, I just wanna thank all of the committee members for their hard work. I really look forward to codifying the multicultural committee, uh, soon before July first, they have really proven themselves to be dedicated volunteers and are adding great volun, um. Great, adding great value to our community, these events are really well-attended. I'm, I'm speaking of them, uh, they had a meeting, uh, since our last meeting, they are, um, coming up with a structure to actually recruit more volunteers to help with events. Sort of taking the sustainable Verona model, right now, as the, as our, my peers know, they were expanded to nine. We expanded them from six volunteers to nine that actually sit on the committee, but they actually need more volunteers to actually do all of these work, uh, with health planning events. They're also considering a senior focus event to be held in May in honor of Older Americans Month. Finally, on the de-camp situation, I just wanna give my thanks. Um, I made a bunch of phone calls, I think our residents really expected us as elected officials, uh, to advocate on their behalf. I also, um, was in conversation with residents who are impacted on, um, having them also advocate to their state and congressional leaders. To help lend their voice, which I think really did make an impact. In particular, I spoke with, uh, the Chief of Staff for Senator Carrada, who I found him to be incredibly helpful, the senator. Based on calls that she received from our residents and from myself, had a meeting with New Jersey Transit really early on, like the next day after the de-camp announcement. Um, and I also found the staff at Senator Payne's office to be very helpful, and they put out a public statement, as did our former Congresswoman, um, Congresswoman Cheryl. So I wanna thank all the elected officials, um, I think the mayor already mentioned, um, the county's involvement, um, and that was clear from the call that I attended with New Jersey Transit. With other elected officials, including many of my peers. So this was, um, this emergency service of New Jersey Transit putting in is fantastic, it's, our line is gonna be the one ninety-five D. As I already mentioned, tomorrow, we're gonna find out what the schedule looks like, but I just wanna reiterate for residents and what we already talked about here tonight. This is only emergency service through June, they will, New Jersey Transit will be reevaluating. Whether or not to continue this emergency service post-June, and I'll be very much dependent on how much residents use it. Um, and so I do encourage residents that we're using de-camp, de-camp to, you know, give this serious consideration. And for those that maybe commute into New York from time to time, give it a shot, and I'm gonna recommend that also to my husband, who does commute into New York from time to time.
I thought you were gonna recommend that to me.
Uh, I, I'm sure, but I know that you're, uh, you, you could, that would be a great thing to video vlog, Mayor, uh, if you would like to do that, um. And in the interest of time, that's my report.
Yeah, and I will say that you were, uh, much more thorough and eloquent on the Women of Impact panel than my.
I remember my chief chief.
Yeah, exactly, uh, should we say former councilwoman, uh, Tamchek?
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I did not give everyone's titles, but Board of Ed President, and former two-time councilwoman. Catherine Tamchek, who does have the unique, uh, distinction of serving both in our partisan form of government. And in our nonpartisan form of government, cuz she was elected two different times with a break in between, she was also, she's at our prosecutor.
Right, she was, yeah.
As well, and she, uh, ran the Law Department at the county, I mean, we could go on and on all of them, but.
The video's up also.
The video is up and people can watch it on YouTube, it really was a great conversation.
And the room was full.
Room was full and the room was engaged.
And there were snacks.
And there was food.
Yeah. All right, uh, thank you very much, I'll fast over to Councilwoman.
Speaking of food and snacks.
Yeah.
Uh, also, a, a couple repetitive things, but I'll add my touch, uh, the Boy Scout Troop Two Pancake Breakfast. Uh, I was just very impressed by all these, eh, young men. You, you entered and they would actually escort you to a table and then bring you their food, they'd bring you the drink, it was, it was just a very, very nice touch for their pancake. Just, and so I thank them for all their, their work during that, and getting pancakes from, I, I guess scouts. That go out in the woods and, and cook, they were very good pancake, they're very good cooks that, that helped out there. Uh, from there, I went to the sports swap, I would like to thank Resident Carrie Barais for all of her time she put into that. Uh, I was happy to hear it raised a thousand bucks, uh, I was happy to, for two dollars each, get two leather basketballs. So I gave one away, but I will keep the other one and hopefully use it, uh, but it was very nice to see, uh, recycling and reusing, and that was very, very well-attended. Uh, I will also congratulate the five women, uh, for their, uh, nominations to that panel, it was a very engaging event and, uh, like, would said, very well-attended, so that was very nice, uh. Also, I would thank the Holy Spirit for all their, uh, their work they do for the town, their fish fry was, was excellent. And also the art auction at Verona Public Library, it is still open, uh, the website, it's thirty-two auctions. Uh, dot com backslash V P L F, and it's open till eight P M on April fifth still. Uh, it was nice to meet the artist Carolyn Catherine Gray, uh, I did not know until I got there, her daughter was there. Uh, her daughter went to Verona High School, they grew, she grew up in Verona, uh, two years younger than me, so I knew her in high school, uh, so it was nice to see her again and a couple of them. Uh, and lastly, the, uh, Historic Preservation Commission, uh, did work hard getting this one resident to declare their house historic. And one on our, uh, agenda tonight is to, uh, an ordinance to make that a permanent landmark in this town. And I just hope the rest of town, uh, the town council supports that.
Um, I actually drove by, sorry, I actually drove by that house this weekend, um, and it is a historic treasure of town, so I'm incredibly happy to see that, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, compliments, Kimbrough.
Thank you, uh, I too attended the Boy Scout Pancake Breakfast, which is always a lot of fun, as a former scout myself, I do love seeing leadership development, personal development that goes on. Do a lot of projects, not only for Verona, but for this county, um, so it's a great organization to support. Uh, several residents did reach out to the council, um, and to me directly, related to the usage of a building on Grove Avenue. Uh, that has been addressed by proper authorities within town, and I appreciate the residents bringing that up. Because if they had not, I would not have been, so it's a great example of why resident engagement is so important. Um. Like the deputy mayor, I attended the de-camp, uh, call at the, uh, New Jer, with New Jersey Transit, it was very well-done, uh, and I was impressed. With the amount of time, the study that they had put into this, they did it very quickly, um, cuz they had limited notice, they found out about de-camp just about the same time we did. Uh, which is another issue to say the least.
Yeah.
But they had their road supervisors out there at bus stops, counting people, uh, it was a, uh, they did a really good job with that. Um, and it was a good call overall, uh, I'd like to thank. The L D forty representatives, ex-Senator Carrado, who, um, they don't actually represent for us yet, and are still jumping in to help us, uh. In, in my humble opinion, our L D forty reps have done more, not even representing us, than the L E twenty-six reps, uh, who represented us for many years. So I'll be happy to change districts for sure. Um, Unico dedicated the pedestrian crossing light on Grove Avenue, uh, last week or the week before, uh, which was great to see that done, it's already, uh. Been, been really helpful, uh, for traffic, I'd actually used it with my dog, and it does work well, especially at night. Um, the Neighborhood Traffic and Safety Committee met and went over the recommendations that the fourth and report, uh, and Chief Kieran discussed. Some recommendations I'll be putting forth, uh, and the committee and the police department are on the same page, which is great, so I'm looking forward to seeing a lot of those. Uh, really straightforward and, and common sense approaches going through. And finally, I had the distinct honor to accompany the Verona High School band to Disney World, where I got to walk a couple steps behind them as they marched down. Um, Main Street Disney, which was great, the kids did a phenomenal job representing not only the band, but the entire township. Uh, so it was thrilling to see, and I thank everybody, especially the band parents and the, uh, music staff for putting that together, it's, it's. A once-in-a-high-school opportunity for the kids, and they really did a fun job putting that together, so we should be proud of, of the band always, but, um, they did a great job. And that's my report.
And as long as, thank you, and on the topic of music, the deputy mayor and I also, right before that, we were both at the Verona Percussion and Friends, uh, event, which was very unique, um, a full concert of, of percussion. The kids were very passionate and incredibly talented, every time I attend something, uh, that is done by our music programs here, I'm just amazed at, uh, you know, and. What we do, what these kids are capable of, of, uh, how talented Mr. Lynch is in directing them, and how passionate he is about working with these, uh, these kids, so I just wanted to congratulate everybody involved for that as well, I really enjoyed it, so. You, Councilman Holland?
Thanks, um, I wanna start by wishing happy holidays to all those who celebrate, this week marks the overlap of various significant spring religious holidays. And I hope that all residents feel included and welcomed here in Verona. I was honored to attend Senator Menendez's event to celebrate Women's History Month with Secretary of State Clinton. And that same weekend, I was pleased to attend the Girl Scouts See Her, Be Her Career Fair in downtown Newark. Um, it was, both of these events were extremely empowering, um, but I will give the Girl Scouts credit. Um, for really engaging young women, um, and showing them all the different careers, there were a tremendous amount of STEM careers, and I, I do mean what I said into. Our CFO this evening, like, it's, it's tremendously powerful to see the light in, in these young people's eyes and, and see all of their opportunities. Um, and I, I think it's important, um, for there to be women in government, and I really encourage, uh, the Girl Scouts Heart of New Jersey to continue inviting. And I really encourage the Girl Scouts Heart of New Jersey to continue inviting women in government. And, you know, including representatives such as our CFO or municipal clerk would be great additions for next year. I want to acknowledge the resident feedback received as much as my colleagues have as well regarding the discontinuation of the camp bus service. And I really want to sincerely thank New Jersey Transit on their, their rapid response. In particular, I want to acknowledge and express my sincere appreciation for the engagement of New Jersey Transit Board Member Bob Gordon, who spoke to me directly and at length and followed up, offering his immediate and timely assurances that New Jersey Transit understood Verona's needs and that we would be considered in the solution. Yeah, they, they jumped on it immediately. And as Deputy Mayor McGrath stated, this is really a use it or lose it emergency moment. So I do really want to encourage residents to be using this new service while it's available so that New Jersey Transit gets those metrics and they understand our needs. For those that don't want to take the bus down Route Three and into Port Authority, again, Route twenty-nine bus service is a regular part of my commute and it does offer both the express and local options. So I encourage residents to look there if they want to just get transportation to one of the local train stations. I serve as liaison to the Environmental Commission and they have been asking at their meetings regular, regularly about some of their recommendations. And I have yet to see the invasive species ordinance on an agenda for new business. So the commission recommended this ordinance months ago and spring has certainly sprung. So I do think it's in our best interest to act sooner rather than later. So I would like to, to see that on an upcoming agenda. I want to acknowledge that their March cleanup was canceled, but they do have, and they, they already started advertising a very cool celebratory event for Earth Day. So I really want to encourage residents to attend that. That should be, that should be a lot of fun. As to resident engagement, I also want to acknowledge the many complaints I have received about the spring recreation programming. I, you are heard. Like I have received a lot of phone calls and, and emails about this. I'm pretty confident at this point that the challenges of spring registrations have hit most families in town. I understand that the township administration is working with staff to address these issues and I sincerely think that we can do better. I do look forward to empowering the rec committee. I'm, I'm really grateful for those individuals really leaning into their roles more, asking much more probing questions and being engaged more. And I hope that maybe we can do something, maybe consider reevaluating their ordinance to really empower them to take a more active role in, in some of the recreation challenges that we've seen. Finally, and on a somewhat sad note, I really want to acknowledge the tragic school shooting that took place in Nashville. And, you know, why am I mentioning this horrific event that took place outside of Verona? And it's not politics. It's, it's really the people. In particular, the shooting left nine-year-old children dead and I have a nine-year-old daughter. And as a councilwoman, earlier in March, I was invited to read books at, at, you know, Read Across America Day to third graders at Forest Avenue School, and those, those are nine-year-olds. So as a mother and as an elected official, these events really reverberate with me. And I'm consumed by empathy for these families. And I, I sincerely want this to stop. So accordingly, just as we've shown solidarity with the suffering in Ukraine or fallen police officers, I really want us to remember victims of gun violence and shine our lights orange for awareness. Just as we've recognized earlier this evening, Child Abuse Prevention Month, with a proclamation, I encourage the mayor and my colleagues to remember Gun Violence Awareness Day. And we're orange weekend with a proclamation this year, because, you know, if we all care about keeping children safe from harm, as I do, I think we should really be consistent. And I think that's what our residents are expecting of us. So I just wanted to, to put that on the record because I was, I was really bothered by this event as, as I am every time. So thank you for allowing me to make these remarks and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. And as I was in the past, I would be in favor of recognizing that again this year. So.
Thank you.
We did not please put that together. And then just for clarification purposes, would you like to see the invasive species ordinance in new business on the next meeting?
Would really like to. I know that the members of the Verona Environmental Commission really would. We have a meeting next week. It is spring break, so it might be sparsely attended. But if there are any questions from the administration, I know that the commission is available to answer them. So whatever we need, if, if it's a matter of brand or you needing more time to, to prepare the ordinance, I'm sure they'd make themselves available.
I'm certain that our clerk pro tem, our, our clerk is watching us. I know that and our clerk pro tem, we know that.
As I noted in my report, I hope we can also in new business talk about the multicultural community and accessibility, multicultural inclusion and accessibility advisory committee complications.
Hey, moving on, we have no ordinances on second reading this evening. We have one ordinance on first reading, which is a bond ordinance. It's item number H one. Pro tem, would you please read the title of that ordinance into the record?
Amending in their entirety and superseding bond ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-one, they're thirteen and supplemental ordinance number twenty-two, they're thirty for ADA ramp at Town Hall, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Somebody like to move your ordinance?
Don't move.
Okay, move by Deputy Mayor McGrath. Someone can second it. For discussion purposes. I'll second, I'll second. Second from Councilwoman Tumbrow. I would like to just ask for some discussion. This appears to be a relatively large increase in the dollar amount of this ordinance over what was previously authorized. Am I correct in that? Now, can we talk about, you know?
Yeah, this has kind of been, I think, the second or third time we've had to increase this one. Just additions, some cost expenses, but also some finished work we wanted to include in there. And then what wasn't originally in was the installation of the EV charging station and all the infrastructure for that also, which is the bulk of it. That was probably about thirty thousand dollars. And then some finished work on the concrete, like I said, some increased costs. This was one that, believe me, we've learned a lot from. With the engineering from the start was not great. As, as we learned, this was two, two engineers ago at this point.
So some of this was a voluntary change for actually installing the EV charging as opposed to just to make ready. Just procedurally, is there a reason why you're not coming to us first for the, you know, for an okay to add to the capital?
Um, we actually thought that was approved back before this ask with that two fifteen. So that was a little bit of a miscommunication, I think, with some previous staff. So we probably should have with that one. It was also under the twenty percent rule, which doesn't mean we shouldn't have come to you and notified you of that one. But I think that was, everyone thought that was previously approved.
So what is exactly the cost? What are we improve, what are we authorizing if we go forward with this?
The station, the installation of the station, which includes the station itself, which would be recouped, just so you know, through some of the incentive programs. But you do, it's a reimbursement program.
Okay. So I mean, what I'm asking is have, you know, has this construction already been authorized? Or are you looking for a go ahead on, and has this already, has this already happened? And you're looking for a retroactive approval for a change order cost? Are you looking for an okay to sign off on a C O?
Yeah, the.
Which one?
Some of the work has already been approved, which was some of the finished work on the ramp. It originally wasn't specked out that way. We thought, everyone agreed that it really should have had a finished look included in it, which is, you know, just literally on the ramp walls and everything. Some of this was for the railing costs. There's a misestimation there. And on some of the concrete also. And previously, one of the other increases was just when they were doing the demo, the footings that was, were discovered underneath was well above what was estimated in the project.
Right. And, and what I would do is I would differentiate here and, and I'm sorry, this is not the actual formal hearing on this. So it's, you know, right.
Well, you're asking a question.
Yeah. So I'm just going to, just as a matter of general process, I understand fully when you run into existing site conditions that were unanticipated after demolition. I do understand that not every set of plans is perfect. What I do think we need, and I do understand that to keep construction moving along, be very frequent, we do have to just simply make decisions in, in that process. But I would say that when there are changes that are design changes in a project that are going to cause a positive change order, I would rather, like at least our temperature be taken on it first. You know, if it's, if there's good reason and it makes the project better and it prevents us from having to do something twice, you know, if it makes sense, we'll say yes to it. I just don't like doing retro approvals for too many things. And I'm not going to, you know, shoot things down out of, you know, like, you know, for reasons other than that. But it's just, I feel like you should continue the project, get the project done. But if there's a reason why the project needs to be altered and it's going to cost more, I want to know about it first.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, well, I agree with Mayor. The idea of retroactively being something that is a significant expense does not sit well with me. And I'll make more comments in the hearing, but I imagine you can probably figure out what I hope for that purpose. But my question is, why is there an EV charging station being put in when we have two in the municipal complex already? And, you know, seems like this is a pretty significant expense to add when the purpose of this project was to put in an ADA ramp to make the building accessible. And we added a EV charging station when there are two across the, across the way. And they're very rarely both used. So what is the utility of doing this? And why was it done without the council's consent?
Yeah. So why we're doing it is actually in relation to a study we've done a while ago, which was a fleet inventory. The goal, as we look forward, that's the way society is moving is toward an electric fleet. So we are looking at electrifying our fleet. So any chance we could install that infrastructure now ahead of time, we do want to do it. Just the way we had to pull the power from the building would have gone directly under the ramp. So while we had the ramp out, we thought it was a smart move to put that infrastructure in.
But you could, you could make it ready versus installing a station there. We could have run the wiring without installing the station, saved.
Right, which is what was done and, and improved. Again, the actual station itself and some of the associated costs for the installation will be reimbursed through the different incentive programs. So right now, we do not have the station. We don't have the money yet to buy that station, but we would have to, to pay for that. And just in general planning, some of the other projects, areas we're looking at, when we go to repave the community center parking lot, our goal is to run all the conduits and everything necessary now so we don't have to go and open things back up in the future.
And I have no problem running the conduit.
I mean, that makes, to me, that makes logical for planning sense. You obviously don't want to rip up this structure that you've already done. I mean, I think what I would want to see at this point in time is between now and, you know, us looking at the hearing on this is demonstration that the cost of the station would actually be recoupable. I'd like to see that in front of us as to what that cost is and where reimbursed the money is. And if it's just an accounting thing and it's going to be net neutral to the township and we know that a hundred percent. You know, I'm fine with that. I mean, I would hope we could get the offset funding in before we, you know, incur debt and interest costs on this. So it's kind of my thoughts is I would like to see a little bit more on that because that does sound like that's still optional at this point in time. It's kind of my thought process. It's just simply, you know, that's, the, the project is increasing.
One other question, just, just a note, looking at this, this ordinance, like it's written in section one. We have in the center of appropriating a hundred and ninety-five thousand, therefore including ninety-nine thousand and forty. Is that in the one ninety-five supposed to be three forty-five? Because every other place it says appropriating three forty-five.
I think that's the original.
Is it, so it's one ninety-five, two, three forty?
The original amount was one ninety-five, then it was up to two fifteen. And now we're looking to bring the total to three forty-five.
And, but we still show the same hundred thousand dollar C D B G grant and now five K capital improvement dollars. You know, we're twisting in there in the first place. So. Yeah, I'm going to want to see some detail on this. I mean, it's, it's, you know, this is just introduction at this point in time, which, you know, notifies of the public hearing, but I do want to see some.
It'd be helpful. We have eighty percent increase.
Right, exactly. Mr. Diarcos.
Hold on, I mean, I've been reading.
I'm sorry.
Did you have something further to add?
Yes, I just wanted to assure the council. Moving forward, some of the things you're recognizing are not happening in the future. We've made a number of changes with the engineering firms that we have on board. The pre and design meetings include all your staff. No one's eliminated from, including commissions that need to be involved. And you should not be faced with these kind of issues in the future with some of the procedures we put in place. So I assure you, I share your concerns.
I'm sorry, councilor.
It's okay. I said at the end. I'm, I'm happy to move this forward for first reading, but I am likewise intrigued by the grants that you've referenced. So there are, there is funding available for the make-ready works. So are you also availing yourself of the funding available for make-ready?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, that wasn't clear from your earlier presentation. So if you can break down the funding that you've been utilizing and in terms of broader make-ready, that should be incorporated into a larger community energy plan. And so if you're looking at something like a solar feasibility study, which is what you had listed as item eighteen on your report, I think you should really be looking at a community energy plan. Because you should not be implementing EV make-ready throughout this municipality without a broader understanding of how that relates to our other energy needs and how we can maximize both the state and federal incentives, as well as the incentives through P S E and G and how it would work if we are then metering all of our buildings, et cetera. There are firms that do this work. They work on all of these projects and they will do an entire comprehensive package for our community, including the EV. So if this is something that we don't have the means to accomplish with the expertise that we have in-house, then I would encourage us to engage professional services firms. So it can be done right so that we don't have this kind of a massive change order going forward. But I do hear you, Mr. Diarcos, and I do, I do believe you when you've said that we've made engineering reforms such that we wouldn't see these kind of massive changeovers in the future. But I do want to see that information on the grants and how you are leveraging all the state and federal funding available for EV make-ready. And I wholeheartedly agree that electric vehicles are where we are going as, as a nation, as a state. And so making ourselves available to that and anticipating future needs is a smart strategic move.
And Deputy Mayor wanted to.
Yes. And if you can, I agree with Councilwoman Holland on that. I, I actually, I think putting in EV in general, you know, we're going to, we, we're going to need to put it in everywhere. But to her point, we need that comprehensive energy strategy and then EV is a piece of that so that we can get a strategic plan, like looking at the entire township, where are we going? I know we have ideas, but we need some experts to come in. But if we can, if you can give us before we vote on this, just a timeline of, and refresh us, like when we passed the bond ordinance, when we went out to bid, who we hired, when you started running into construction issues. I know that from the mayor's long history on the council that the, the clear communication and timely communication when issues are rising with construction back to the council is necessary, even if it's a short note. So the fact that we're hearing now that, oh, we didn't realize about the finishing, like we saw this project going on for months and we thought, you know, everything was good. So we don't like to be surprised at this point, which I think is what we're feeling. And we had, under previous administrations, gotten good at telling us like real time when we hit a roadblock, even going back to Anne Cypress. You know, also now we heard, oh, wait, maybe we didn't engineer and we forgot a whole section or we realized we want to do that additional section. So we, we need to rapidly get to that point where we're being informed, like when these things are coming up.
And I mean, the way I would put it is in between meetings. When there's a significant issue in an ongoing capital project that is going to substantially increase cost or delay construction, I would say that the council should be notified in between meetings, at least so we're aware of it. Where obviously we're not in a position to make decisions at that point in time. But that way, at least if we have additional questions that we want to ask you, we can do it, you know, while you're dealing with the issue and, and see what's going on. So just, it's, it's just a capital cost management thing and also schedule management, the same thing. And us being able, ultimately, at the end of the day, the public is asking us these questions, what's going on by street? What's going on with this project and so on? And I always want to be able to actually answer them. So that's, you know, that's really what I'm looking for is just real time information when you have it, please. So, so that being said, I'm sorry.
Steve, can you please just maybe email us, really, give me like the, the areas of where this increase really hit the most? These numbers are baffling. Going from, it's really going from ninety-five to two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Going from, it's really going from ninety-five to two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, uh. If we can see exactly where, and and I understand at the beginning. The, the demo was just extensive, far more than what they thought. But, you know, sometimes in contracting, you have to eat some of that, and we shouldn't be the ones bearing that.
Yeah, just so you know too, even that one ninety-five originally, um, which was in there was based off estimates. Which turned out to be very poor estimates from, uh, one of the previous engineers. Um, so the lowest bid for that project came in much higher than that came in twenty-eight thousand dollars over. So automatically we, we jumped from right there, um, but I agree, at that point, we should have taken a hard look. At that project before we really got started, um, to try and figure out some money.
It's, it's not intended to excoriate anyone or if you want to get that order. So, all right, um, so we already had a motion and a second on this. This is just a adoption at this point in time. Uh, it'll obviously be held for public hearing, so, um, the article will do please.
Yes. Councilman Holland.
Yes.
Councilman Tamboro.
No.
Councilman McAvoy.
I'm gonna say no.
Deputy Mayor McGrath.
Yes.
Mayor Ron.
Yes. Now, the problem is that this is a, you know, this is a bond ordinance which requires for to pass doesn't require for to introduce or for to approve.
I'm sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can text Figuru and he'll get it.
Okay, uh, let's just see whether or not, yeah, that would be, I don't want to. It's, but for, the question is for introduction, for introduction for discussion, does it require? The super majority or is it only for approval?
This is with not listening.
Right, it's a bond ordinance, so we know it requires a super majority to pass. I just don't know whether it requires a super majority to introduce. So, um, so when we get that answer, I'll say whether or not that, uh, pass will.
Mayor, before we move on to the consent agenda. Traduce to have a. An opportunity for public comments.
Yes.
Before now, and it's not a cost, so hoping we can have a, a public comment on. Any.
On any item rather, just before we go on. Okay, that's fine. And then we'll, you know, consent agenda, I'll ask for more time. All right, so I'm going to, uh, open the floor for general public comment on any matter at this time. Uh, we read a public comment statement earlier in the meeting, um.
Thank you.
Yes, I will not make Mr. Diarco reread it, but, uh, please start off with your name. Uh, we are not, are we not requiring addresses? Okay, you do not have to give your address anymore. Uh, your comments.
Yeah, at least give.
Uh, yes, at least you're, at least the town, I mean, that does go in the, in the records. Um, you have four minutes to make your comments. Please avoid repeating other items and the council council at the end of your comment may. Uh, address your comments thereafter, uh, there will be no cross dialogue. Very much, uh, please raise your hand on Zoom or come over to the, yeah, and we've got two on Zoom. Let our first comment ring.
Right? Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, Kevin Ryan, ninety-two Elmwood Road. Uh, I'm not sure whether this comment, uh. Would refer to the, uh. Uh, agenda not, uh, I'm, I'm a little confused. Did we pull the resolution about the, uh? What off or is that still on? Um, you won't answer it till the.
Right, but.
Uh, De- to Deputy Mayor, she made a couple of, uh, I think very good points about, uh, the devil being in the details here. Your resolution just basically. Uh, is authorizing us to enter in an agreement with the other two towns, uh. It, with that in mind, is the, is the actual contract going to be made available? I, I didn't see it. I was scrolling through the, uh, the package online. If you are looking for some meaningful. Comment, I think it would be helpful to tell the public where they can get a, an actual copy of the, the contract, uh. The shared, the shared court thing, as Mr. Neil pointed out, has been, you know, uh, gone back and forth for, uh, a long time. Uh, one thing that the public maybe should, should note with shared agreements is between Verona and other townships. That involve personnel. One of the key things that always came up was the fact that Verona is a civil service town. Many of our surrounding towns are not. Now, what does that mean, uh, in general? Uh, Verona in, in essence is held to two different, to two standards. We have contracts with our. Unionized employees and there are also civil service regulations that have to be followed whenever any, uh, type of. Uh, consolidation which might involve moving personnel. I'm not sure whether or not that came up during the course of, of this contract, but it would be something that, uh. That, uh, would be needed to note, I think. And you can always fact check me on this, that we are one of the very few West Essex towns that is actually a civil service town. Most of the other towns operate, uh, via contract. Uh, with their, uh, bargaining unit employees, so that may or may not be an issue, uh, but hopefully, uh, uh, it, it would be, uh. Clarified, uh, in the contract. Uh, the second point that I wanted to make was regarding the, uh. Uh, the NJ Transit situation, uh. We, we, pre-pandemic, I guess back in twenty nineteen, the prior town manager and I, and I, Mr., uh. Uh, Mr. Neil alluded to that. We did do a number of studies. We met with the. Other West Essex towns, the Caldwell, all of the Caldwell's, Essex Fells and Roseland. And at that point in time, it was just deemed. Not economically feasible. I, I realize the situation has changed, uh, you may or may not want to look into it again. But the other thing that needs to be brought up in any of these discussions regarding the U, the ridership. Is that post pandemic. The situation has dramatically changed. If you look, many of the work situations for people going into Manhattan have now developed the hybrid model. Where they don't go in, uh, five days a week. They often work two days at home and they maybe go in three, two or three days. Uh, I know the PATH train. Has started to do some studies on this because they've actually lengthened the platforms in Newark and, uh, I believe Harrison. To accompany, uh, more ridership to add another car or two on, and they're seeing very uneven ridership. Days they, they, they're packed and other days there's nobody there. So hopefully in New Jersey Transit, when they do their studies of the. Uh, the bus situation will hopefully take this into account when they pick days to do the surveys. They may also find the same uneven. Uh, distribution of, uh, of commuting, which makes things very. Very complicated, but it's just something that, uh, I don't know if, uh, the deputy mayor or councilman Tamboro could. Let us know if that was discussed at all during the, uh, the call that they, uh, participated in. Thank you.
Thank you, and perfect, uh, perfect gun time there. Uh. Oh, thank you. We absolutely are out of time. All right, we do have one more, uh, one more commenter pending.
I've got the eight timer up there.
Yep, thanks for trying. Uh, we can let, uh. Mr. Blitz.
Robert Blitz, uh, running New Jersey. I'll try to be even quicker than Kevin, which is almost impossible for me, but I will, um. I just have one comment which I've made before to the planning board directly, but I'll make it to the council and it's a question. I'm, I'm well aware that there are. Government regulations probably for the Jersey, uh, what the minimum notice period is for announcing. Various type of meetings and obviously. That's something that the council and all the different departments hold too. It's a legal requirement. My question is this. While there are minimum. Time periods for posting agendas and for announcing meetings. With particular regard to the planning board commission. Even though that's the minimum, given that everyone in town and everyone on the council. Are busy and then there's something that becomes of interest that people want to attend. More notice is better than little notice. As long as the data of those meetings are known. Could the council influence or actively require? The planning board and other committees to, when a meeting. Is going to be scheduled, do they know in advance to post it sooner than the minimal notice period? And I have a, a, a beat of that, which is related directly to it. With regards to meetings that are being continued, such as the. Uh, Sunset Avenue, uh, planning board discussions that keep on going, multiple sessions. Evidently, there's no, there's no requirement as a matter of law. To give a announcement of a meeting if it's just continued to be occurring on different days. Uh, while that may not be a requirement under the law. Could the council see fit to? Give better notice beyond what the law requires to the citizenry, citizenry. Those are my questions.
Thank you very much, sir. Um, anyone else for public comment? Last call? I think none. I'm now closed public comment. Um, all this from Mr. Ryan's comments, um, right now, the court study is still in the consent agenda. Before we entered it, I was going to give the deputy mayor an opportunity to make a motion. To table that, um, we didn't, uh, it was not on the floor for discussion when we talked about it. It was just being discussed in township management report. So, uh, I. I'm assuming that we'll hear a motion to table, uh, as far as civil service goes, uh, yes, matters regarding to civil, relating to civil service were considered. Um, in this process and, uh, Mr. Diarco has done all the appropriate review and processes required, uh, so we believe we are in compliance with that and any other employment related matters. Um, and then I'll say thank you for your comments on NJ Transit. Obviously, um, you know, I agree with you in terms of their studies. Uh, hopefully it makes the most logical sense because you're right, working patterns have changed. Um, to Mr. Blitz about the notice periods, uh, for meetings, um, again, I'll kind of look at, uh, look at, uh, our clerk and our attorney this evening, uh, for assistance, um. You know, with the notice periods. My understanding, when, I think you might be referring to when they say no particular, uh, no further notice will be given for an application. That generally tends to mean that they don't have to send letters out to all of the people within a two-hundred-foot radius. Uh, it's still a public meeting. Now, now, when we do our regular meeting notice and we put our calendar together of meetings and we announce that at the beginning of the year. Those meetings are, the regular meetings are noticed. The agendas are not available. The agendas still need to be published on time. Uh, when we add a special meeting, that is notice of the special meeting and then the agenda has to be posted as well. Um, as far as doing more notice, uh, the issue with doing that, at least in my opinion, is if you have an agenda which is likely to change. Um, you know, essentially you can notice and you give an agenda and then you change that agenda in between, you know, when you publish it and the cutoff time. Um, now how do you make sure that you properly inform the public that you've changed that? We have an addendum process here at the council, which also has its own time limit, um. But there's a, there's, you know, there's, there's more issues with that, um, to actually make sure that we're giving proper notice and proper information. In general, I agree with you that always more, you know, more notice is better than less notice on these meetings, but we also want to make sure that the proper version of documents is what you're seeing and that. The minimum number of amendments happens, in particular on the planning board, which, you know, this is not the planning board, but obviously who of us sit on it. Um, a lot of those hearings are, you know, the applicant has a substantial influence on what will be heard during the meeting simply because they're sending the experts in. And we've seen situations where they've had to change their presentation order just simply because someone is not available, um. So that's where some of that can change, unfortunately. So I don't know if anyone else or if, or.
I think you hit the nail on the head, man.
Mr. Diarco?
Make a quick. Um, just a note, uh, for a lot, especially the planning board and zoning board, those documents, there is a meeting documents page. Um, so as those documents come in, um, and I'm only speaking on this because I actually post those to the website. As they come in, we post that, those documents up on the website, not the agendas necessarily, but all the, the applications and associated documents. Um, comments from the environmental commission, those do get posted as far in advance as possible.
Right.
But like you said, some of these documents come in, as you know. Minutes before the meeting sometimes, and obviously we can't get those posted, but we do actually try, um, to post the documents as far in advance as possible. And what we started doing, um. For the planning board's recommendations, which is good ideas, we date those documents now the day they go up on the website.
I, I've seen that and that is very helpful, so thank you. Do you want to have any further responses? Um, so before we actually start digging into the consent agenda, I'll give an opportunity for a motion to, able to, so we don't have to amend the consent agenda or other, otherwise.
Can we, we should move the consent agenda.
Okay, would you like to do that?
I'll move the consent agenda with the exception of case.
Let me actually, um, right, let, let me actually go ahead and just read through the consent agenda and we'll take the motion without those two if, if you don't mind. So, again, always do the discussion of what's in it. Uh, we have one set of minutes from March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, as far as resolutions go, we have, uh, our twenty twenty, uh, recycling tonnage grant, uh, that we have to accept. Uh, resolution K two is the court shared service agreement that was previously discussed. Resolution K three is a professional services agreement with solutions architecture, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is specifically with related to the public safety facility. Uh, for this, okay, excellent. Uh, and then we have the treaty experts, both, two of them, as was previously discussed as well. Uh, contract with Fairview Insurance Agency Associates as our health insurance broker. Uh, kind of a contract with Nature's Choice Corporation. This is for the disposal of vegetative waste. There was some discussion on this at the last meeting. Uh, contract with, uh, Civicos Enterprises, which I, it's not for the Verona pool. Um, disposal of obsolete equipment, which is the old, uh, rescue squad, uh, rescue truck. Uh, we already did K nine. Uh, we have four escrow refunds and we have executive session this evening, which is, uh, pending ongoing anticipated litigation, contract negotiations and personnel matters. Um, would somebody like to make a motion regarding the consent agenda? Uh, should be, it should be, um, I mean, is it procedural or is it substantive? Because if it's substantive, it should be after the motion if it's procedural.
It's a question on, i- is it, if we wanted to remove one of these escrow refunds. Uh, should we do it before we move this or? If we wanted a further.
We need to call that and then discuss this.
It, it can go, you know, it could be done either way. I mean, normally what happened, normally what we do is someone makes a motion to pull items for the consent from the consent agenda. And then we move the consent agenda as modified. Is what I, what I think we've done in the past.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, uh.
A legal question, if, if, uh, if a resident is. Is currently being fined by the town. Should we be issuing escrow root? Refunds on their escrow accounts.
Is, is the fine, if I may, anything related to the taxes or?
The use of the property.
Violations on the property?
Yes.
I don't believe it can all be escrowly refund if they pay those. It's two separate matters.
Okay.
One's a litigation matter, right, and, and the other is money they paid to the township.
Okay.
That they're entitled to receive back.
I don't find it.
It seems good.
Look at you.
Yeah.
Oh, I have these questions.
If I may, though, I, I would like to point on K five for separate discussion and vote, um, because I do have some, some questions about that item.
Okay, K five is a separate one. Uh, K nine, I'll recognize that we've already passed and I would expect a motion to table one.
Should I make that?
Please go ahead, yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, table resolution K two on the, um, and.
To the next meeting?
To the next meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, um. Yes, uh, this is just on tabling, um. Do you want to do roll call?
Yes, roll call.
Okay.
Councilman Holland.
Yes.
Councilman Tamboro.
Yes.
Councilman McAvoy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath.
Yes.
Mayor Ron.
Yes, okay, so, uh, that is tabled and will be brought back up at the following meeting. Yeah, okay, um, all right, now would somebody like to? So K five has been set for, uh, separate discussion. K nine has already been passed. K two is tabled. Would someone like to make a motion for? The remainder of the consent agenda, including the minutes.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, Councilwoman Tamboro, second from, uh, Deputy Mayor McGrath, um, so I will open, uh, public comment on the consent agenda. Only, this is only for consent agenda items and the same public comment statement, uh, limited to the consent agenda, four minutes, uh, name and city at the beginning. Uh, no rough addition of comments and counsel, uh, no cross dialogue, counsel may offer the answer after. Uh, we have one person, one hand, I see.
Good evening, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Jessica Pearson, Verona, New Jersey, um. Based on the discussion that happened at the last meeting and by that I mean comments, um, and questions raised by Councilwoman Holland. On K six. The grass waste. Um, you know, the yard waste and also. Questions and suggestions that have been made multiple times by Councilman Tamboro about our contracts. And when they start, when they end, what they're for, what they include. Um, I think we really, Verona really needs to do that because. I'm looking at a contract from twenty twenty. It's actually resolution twenty twenty dash one seventy-five. That is an award for two hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred dollars ending at the end of this year for Waste Industries. Who happens to pick up our yard waste right now. So, uh, you know, to get in front of the questions that were raised at the last meeting concerning whether we have. That waste is already being picked up and disposed of by Waste Industries. What exactly is nature's? Uh, I don't even know what they're called now. Um. The twenty thousand dollar Nature's Choice Corporation going to actually be doing for us, that's not already getting done essentially right now. Um, that's question number one. And question number two is. um, when do the foresters' services kick in and who is going to be overseeing compliance? Um, for the tree ordinance, who's going to be making the determination on replacement values? Who's going to ensure that those values or the financials are coming into the town in a timely manner? Um, that used to be the job of the zoning code official. I would like to know who's going to be, uh, pushing for compliance on those things. Thank you.
You, um. Any further comments on the consent agenda? Last call. All right, I will post comment on the consent agenda. Um, both of the questions that were asked by Ms. Pearson, um, seem to be more administrative in nature, so I'm going to ask the township administration first. Um, regarding the differences between the waste industries, we're going to pick up contract of Nature's Choice. Uh, so we'll start there.
Uh, sure. So Waste Industries is just the collection company for that, so they pick up the bags, bring it to another site, which is Nature's Choice for the processing end of it and the recycling.
This is much like we're paying the, uh, the incinerator authority or we have for.
Right, we have the incinerator for our garbage and, um, another processing plant for all of our recycled materials. It's just.
And takes that over for the hauling and for the disposal.
Exactly.
Okay. So we, Waste Industries is, is handling the hauling, Nature's Choice is handling the disposal.
Right, and we have, um, priced out other options, um, some are at quite a distance, a larger expense, so that's why we, we are recommending Nature's Choice.
And then, uh, the second question regarding when the foresters' contracts would take effect and, uh, within the township, which department or which, you know, who would be leader of managing compliance?
Yeah, um, right now, our temporary zoning, um, will be handling that as well, along with the staff that has a lot of experience with it, who's been helping our previous zoning officer process all those requests. Um, so we'll be there and then closely monitored, um, definitely right now while things get going with administration.
Okay. So essentially it is the, the interim zoning and, and the existing, uh, staff within the office as well.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And obviously, we're going to keep an eye on, you know, as we implement this, this will be a point of administrative attention to. Implement it, so. Um, okay, any council discussion on the consent agenda?
I, I did have a question. So with regard to Nature's Choice with their disposal of our vegetative waste, like, can I get further clarity about what that means? Like, are they composting it? Are we getting any benefit of that composting? Um, or are they incinerating it? Like, how, how are they handling our vegetative waste disposal?
I will have to find a little bit more detail on that, but I know that facility, they accept it, grind it all up, turn it and then get rid of it, sell it. They don't, so it does get processed, I believe, into compost, but I will confirm that.
Mr. Diarco?
That, that is correct. Nature's Choice is a reprocessor and they reprocess the waste they, uh, produce a marketable product and they bag it and sell it.
So we're paying them to take our waste to churn it up for them to sell to somebody else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, there, there should be a better way. I, like, I'm not gonna like upset this contract now, but I, I really do encourage sustainable Verona, the environmental commission has made recommendations about composting. Um, there, there's probably a more cost effective way of handling this.
To, to answer that, there is, um, you would need to make an investment into the equipment to do exactly what that company does.
Could we all get firewood as well?
Yeah.
If I could get a passenger in two thousand nineteen.
This is in, in any time.
That's.
It is, it is very much doable. Uh, it, it works a capital investment into the exotro equipment. You don't have the baggage, you can actually yeah, it's in essence double munching it, uh, so that it is available then to landscapers for price and you can give it to your residents. I've done that before, it works, but it isn't a significant investment, but there is a return on the investment.
Yeah.
By not having to haul it out. We're not there yet.
I, I, I would like, you know, to, to hear more about that. So again, I'm not going to hold up this evening, but I, I do think there's a better way and I, I would like to hear more about that. And we do have two very engaged environmental groups in this town that, that could do some of this research or assistance and or fundraising, if that's some thing that we need maybe to, to get some of this so that we can do it. I think we would have constituents that are very interested in a program like that.
If I may, Mayor, I, I think that the, the council is very much aware of that return on investment is what you usually look for. If we invest in something, what is the return on investment? How's it a benefit to the community? In essence, you could eliminate, uh, those costs of hauling it out, reprocessing it here, providing to the community. And normally it, it's anywhere between five and seven years for return on investment. I can say that candidly because I've done that.
That's, that's a terrible ROI in my opinion, but, but you know, it's, and I do think again that we would have um, significant, uh, constituent interest in, in, I think the residents, you know, care about the environment. Um, and, and would like to see something like that. So I'm, I'm very eager if you guys could explore that further, um, and or engage our two community committee board and boards, um, so to, to, to look into that further. Cause we, we've been talking about composting and other things for, for several years now, so that's a cool opportunity if, if possible.
Yeah.
And maybe there's grant funding available as well.
So there, there is, um, and it is something we've engaged both groups with. We've actually met about it. It would tie into a possible food waste program, um, which we've looked into in a pilot program. So there are a lot of options. Um, we've actually identified some facilities that we might be able to repurpose. Um, to house a location for something like that.
That's very, that's very exciting.
I would agree with Councilwoman Holland one hundred percent. I've said it in the past. I don't think I even think we have the area in town where, where we could put it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I think it would be a, uh, definitely a revenue generator for the town and we bring in the composting. We pay for wet garbage. We pay to dump it at eighty-five, ninety dollars a ton.
Yeah.
I think we would save a ton of money.
Is this, is this an NJDEP regulated activity?
On the location that we would put it, if needed, we may, yes.
So this is a, a involved project review. Any further discussion on any consent agenda item this one where we?
I did have one other question regarding a tonnage grant. I believe the resolution talked about, um, funding new recycling programs as well as cycling programs. Are we looking at the development? Grant or how are we anticipating using this grant?
Um, we use it to cover a lot of our current costs and like the shredding events, things like that. We had to use it for E-Waste programs in the past. Um, but the compost program is a recycling program, so I do anticipate using a small portion to kickstart a pilot food waste program.
Okay, and would that be publicly advertised, like all residents to engage in the pilot?
Yeah, absolutely. We would be looking for about fifty to seventy-five max households to participate. Um, but we, that is the plan.
And I believe you also want to get more people to recycle metal, right? Cause metal is the one recyclable material we're actually making money back on or?
Yeah, scrap metal is the one thing we actually get a check for.
Yeah, so I think a plan to get increased communication on that would be awesome.
Waste is going to be a big topic.
It's gonna be a big topic.
Okay, excellent. Um, okay, any further council discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, so the vote on the consent agenda does not include K two or K five and K nine has already been passed. Um, but it does include the minutes and all remaining resolutions. Uh, should we, would you please call the wall?
Yes. Councilwoman Holland.
Yes.
Councilman Tamboro.
Yes.
Councilman McAvoy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath.
Yes.
Mayor Ron.
Yes. It's all pass.
That's, I think it's sixty-four to seventy-four.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Um, so sixty-four was our next resolution number and then this number sequentially with the exception of the ones that have been removed.
Two, five and.
Right, okay, so resolution K five, which is, um, Fairview Insurance Agency Associates. Uh, would somebody like to move that? So, move by Councilman Tamboro, do I have a second? The second by Councilman McAvoy. Um, so before we, you know, I'll just ask, uh, Mr. Diarco, you must do discuss a little bit on that resolution, what the scope of work would be on this.
Yeah, in, uh, Fairview is, uh, the risk managers assigned to the BMed and UMed policies.
Um, Councilwoman, did you want to lead any?
I just wanted to acknowledge that we have received correspondence, um, regarding, um, like the far, the former broker, um, and I, I just want to acknowledge that I think, you know, getting to some of the points earlier um, this evening about transparency, um, and in prior meetings, I just think that, you know, there are process improvements that we could have made. Um, and I just had concerns about making square corners and I think it's always important for us to do that, um, as elected officials. So that, that's just my only statement.
Um, I'll just kind of expand on that just because I had some thoughts while you were saying that. It's, you know, transparency, it, it ends up looking non-transparent as a result, but really what it comes from is you know, it's timeliness, it's organizing, it's all the things, like you said, square corners that, that get us here. Um, you know, and this is just kind of a, a constant, you know, we're, we're, these agendas are so packed, so many cha- things change at the last minute, documents come late, et cetera. Um, it's a lot of different things. I know we just made some changes in how we handle council documents over the last week or so. Um, you know, we try and be transparent as much as we can and there's not really, you know, we would want to pass as much information onto the public as possible. Um, but I really, you know, we keep saying this over and over and over. The more that we know, the earlier that we know, uh, the more comfortable we feel with this material. That's, you know, what I keep getting into with a lot of this stuff. Is if I saw something a week earlier, if I knew about it a week earlier, like the discussion of the, you know, the bond overage. You know, and that's really the process improvement that I think helps. I mean, I mean, am I missing the point or is?
No, I hear you. I, I think that, you know, there was just some particular process challenges with this one. I'm, I'm not going to go into it in great detail. Um, I do want to make sure that, you know, when we are making changes in services, that we have a solid foundation for doing so. I mean, we can always hire different firms and, and it can be in our discretion, but I just think that we did have a very established firm that had been handling this in town and I know that there was a desire to have a local firm represented and perhaps there were other bases for that decision. And I just feel like maybe this could have been handled better. And so that is just one person's opinion and, you know, I'm confident that the, you know, this pro- program will be handled well going forward. I just, you know, I just had some concerns about that process.
Okay, very well stated, very well taken. Does anyone, I don't have any real response to all what I've already said, if anyone else cares to weigh in, please feel free. Um, okay, uh, then I will now, I will accept public comment on this resolution only, uh. So we're open to public comment. I'm going to just couple words for three seconds here. Last call. Okay, no public comment, I'll close public comment. Uh, any further council discussion? Think none? Mr. Diarco, would you please call the wall?
Councilwoman Holland.
Aye.
Councilman Tamboro.
Yes.
Councilman McAvoy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath.
Yes.
And Mayor Ron.
Yes. Yes, um, before we get too far along, do we have, uh, word on?
Okay, with three to two.
Okay, with three to two for first reading.
First reading.
Okay, then we will say that, uh, ordinance, uh, H one passes on first reading, um. Mr. Diarco, I, I assume it will be duly published according to law and a public hearing held on.
The real clerk has a public hearing will be on April seventeenth.
April seventeenth. Um, I've got most of, like, you know, again, we miss you. I've got, I've got some of these, I got some of these down.
Um, we just have very, very experienced, uh, female representative from the municipal government.
And also town manager who happens to have more than a few extra qualifications as well.
But I have a chip for the girl.
Yeah, I know. And, and she's still watching us tonight and checking in on us.
Jennifer gave me a complete cube card.
That's right. All right, uh, we don't have, we don't, we don't have an addendum tonight. Uh, we'll move on to new and unfinished business. Uh, we have one council appointment to the library.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I, I wanted you to finish your statement about the library board trustees. Mayor, um, there's a name on our agenda, but that does not match the documentation that we received via email from our municipal clerk, um, three days ago. Um, so I, so there was a typo, so, um, I believe it's, um, Arjun Thacker, who is, um.
Yes, and I did actually get a correction on that.
Okay.
Midstream here as well.
Okay, all right.
From our experience, yes.
And diligent.
And yes.
All right, so.
Your, is that the mayor's appointment or is it a council appointment?
Library Board of Trustees, um, it's the mayor's appointment. Uh, it is not a council appointed under this. So, so that is a mayor's appointment, so then I will, uh, recommend, I will, uh, recognize that I am appointing Arjun Becker to the position of trustee on the library board of trustees, term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four, uh, with my appreciation for being willing, so. Um, item number two on new business, uh, is, uh, the ordinance to amend chapter one fifty, article twenty-two, section thirteen of the township code to designate eleven Coal Road as landmark. Um, Councilman McAvoy spoke about this a little bit. Uh, we have a presentation from the historic preservation commission. As I said, I specifically went and I drove by this house. Um, you know, I knew it was there. Uh, I've known that there's a nice house where this is. Uh, I never really stopped to really like look at it. And, um, it is unique and to its own, uh, versus, I mean, the afterglow neighborhood is a beautiful historic neighborhood with uh, lots of houses that can be admired. Uh, eleven Coal Road is, uh, is a little beyond. So I think that this is, uh, outstanding that this is our first historic designation of a home. Uh, I really appreciate, uh, the homeowners, uh, being willing to participate and to, to make this designation. It's, it's just a great step forward and I hope it's the first of many, so that's up to other council discussion.
I mean, I will, uh, chime in, uh, and thank Mr. Amin and Mrs. Amin for, for doing this and stepping up and designating it. The historic preservation, they do have, uh, several others they're working on and we may be getting another one very soon. I look forward to that and I hope we do. Uh, I would ask, I know in the past we put stuff on new business. Uh, and then on the following meeting, uh, have it on first reading, uh, since we, we had the presentation, I believe if, if the rest of the council agrees, we can move this ordinance tonight. I would love to move the ordinance tonight and pass it on first reading tonight.
I'm mindful of that. Um, as the resident historian, I would like to uh, to thank the family for putting this forth. And like, I'll like accept the opportunity to walk by with my dog. It is a, it's beautiful home and there are a couple other homes in the neighborhood of historic value as well, uh, on the streets specifically. Um, and it would be great to see some neighbors follow suit. Um, and hopefully throughout, throughout town, they have some beautiful properties that, uh, uh, it would be great for more people to appreciate and for them to be marked and, uh, that we can publicize this pretty aggressively so that other, uh, property owners do the same.
Okay, any other council discussion? In that case, we do have an ordinance available to us here that we can introduce. It's item number N one, um. All right. Uh, and I'm sorry, it's got N one written on it. Uh, yeah, N two on the agenda. It happens to say N one in the packet. Um, Mr. Diarco, do you have that one handy or, uh?
No.
Okay, uh, then I'll read it, uh, I'll read it by title in the record. Uh, amending chapter one fifty zoning, article twenty-two, historic preservation, section one fifty dash twenty-three, twenty thirteen of the code of the township of Verona to designate eleven Coal Road, Verona as landmark. Uh, would somebody like to make a motion to introduce this on first reading?
So, most.
Moved by, uh, Councilman McAvoy. I did hear our resident historian, uh, so, um, Councilman Tamboro is the second on that one. Uh, Mr. Diarco, would you please call the wall?
Councilwoman Holland.
Yes.
Councilman Tamboro.
Yes.
Councilman McAvoy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath.
Yes.
Mayor Ron.
Yes. Right, um, so that will be, uh, do we publish according to law and a public hearing will be held on?
April seventeen.
April seventeenth. Twenty twenty-three, three months. Um, right, then we have a discussion on EV charging fees, uh, like to.
I'll do the initial comment and Steve and Duncan, Steve and I have been discussing EV charging stations out here, uh, in the, the community center and your ordinance is somewhat, uh, outdated and problematic. Uh, charging stations in both locations are very actively used during the day. Um, leaving them at night, uh, probably have a direct center. You have your first hours free, then it's a dollar per hour after that. And then when the cars are charged, they're not moving and they're just there all night in some cases.
Really?
Steve and I have discussed a number of recommendations with the, also with the township attorney and we, we've started beating that up and want to give you a heads up on some of those changes that we're recommending because you will be installing more charging stations. Or more electric cars coming in, yeah. Ones out here that we're observing, they're not moving. Also have people parking up, community center, that, um, they leave their cars.
They. All night?
They go all day long because you're not getting charged. You're not paying any rate after charging. And so we do have some suggestions for your ordinance, um, to invite you in advance to see if you have any concerns about those suggestions. Um, to invite you in advance to see if you have any concerns about those suggestions.
I'll let Mr. Neil come up, but I will just say very simply that Tesla charges in idle feed and superchargers. If you're plugged into a supercharger, you're done supercharging, sends you a text. You got X many minutes to unplug your car and take it out of the spot, otherwise we start giving you a dollar a minute or something.
Yeah, the Garden State Parkway, which I use occasionally and turnbikes with those in place. Uh, those rapid charging stations, once your car is charged, you need to move. Uh, you can't leave it there. And the rates increase dramatically that you're paying. You don't have any of those uh protections in place here. And with the future of what we're planning to do when you start working on your downtown, which is another project, when you start working on the downtown and your streetscape project, we will be putting in infrastructure for electric charging stations at various blocks. So you need to update your ordinances now. Uh, it's our recommendation to you.
That's true.
And Steve, you're on.
Yeah, um, so I did attach some materials in our our new drive folder. I don't know if you had a chance to check it out, but um there was a kind of an informal survey done with some of the other municipalities, New Jersey Managers Association. Um, people are kind of all over the place. So right now it is, it's the first two hours are free and it's a dollar an hour after that. Um, we kind of think the way to go is to even take away any of the the free um and just start charging initially. Now that one dollar for maybe the first hour, the first two hours seems reasonable. Um, but then the goal is to really get people out and not sitting there all day. So probably that third hour, um, we might wanna see a jump. Then the fourth hour and anything beyond that, um, it should really kind of exponentially um grow uh the fee. Um, one suggestion from Brian was to actually, you know, in that fourth, fifth hour, if you're done charging and you are still plugged in, it's automatically hits your account for the amount of what a parking ticket would be. So it kind of takes out the enforcement factor, jumps instantly to about thirty dollars. And we'll continue to charge you until you move your vehicle. Now, you can set it with the system we have. We have smart chargers. Um, you can send notifications, you could create a buffer in there, you know, so if they're done charging, you could give it an hour, a half hour for them to move the car before they get hit with that big fee. Um, so there's a bunch of different options. So it's kind of what everyone's comfortable with.
I mean, I see, you know, a lot of what's charging there because it's been the most popular electric car up until, you know, the changes now. Uh, yeah, Tesla's charged there all the time. Um, you know, I would be implying to look, you know, to run from the fee structure that you see in a supercharger. Um, you know, that's fairly straightforward. Uh, you get charged for any charging you're used. Uh, and then you get charged a per minute rate for idle time. You know, you have a brief grace period to unplug. The question is, don't, you know, people, do they get a notification through the app or through, you know, when their car is done charging?
I can tell you they do, man, because I've looked my car there and it knows it comes on my phone and it's going off the free time when you're starting to get charged and how much the charge is. So you do have that ability to put it in the computer.
Okay, and you do properly move your.
Oh, I got you. See me go outside.
I I do agree certainly with not having free time. You don't pay. So I don't see why we pay for people's electricity. Um, but how, how much does an hour of electricity cost us for one of these vehicles? Um, if we're going to charge a fee, I would hope that it would be related to how much we're actually paying for the electricity that we're putting into the car.
So I started pulling all those numbers together. Um, I I have to break it down even further to know what that hourly rate is, um, what it actually costs us. Um, and obviously the P S and G rates keep changing, but I will zero in on that a little bit. It seems right now, just kind of based on um a twelve per twelve cent rate um on what we're paying, we're actually so we're giving out two point one nine uh megawatt hours of of electricity. So it's costing us, not costing us, but we're only giving out about a hundred thirty to two hundred, like in between, depending on the rates by a adjusted by a cent or so um fluctuates. So I think at at twelve cents, we're about two hundred and sixty-three dollars um of electricity. And we did take in December, we actually in three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
So that's two hundred and sixty-three is out for a month?
That is within, that's within a thirty day span and that's with both stations. So it doesn't include both stations.
Okay, so that's just the two in.
Yes.
Town, it doesn't include the.
So I'm saying two, it's four, I guess. It's a dual port, so it's both stations, community center and down here.
Um, and do we know how many hours people hooked up to these units and actually gotten, which was?
Yeah, so the average, so it's been a little funky because the station was shut down for a while. We were waiting on parts. So I'm going back to December just because that was our last full month. Um, it's been going up a little bit. Um, we're seeing around like a hundred fifty or so, so it has increased. Um, and we're fifty unique drivers. So we do have a lot of returning customers.
So it's costing us about a dollar fifty on average for a charge. Just throwing, you know, it, I would love to break it down even more.
Yeah.
You see, you can calculate that for us. But um so it's about, on average, it's costing us about a dollar fifty per charge and most people are charging more than that. Right, so people are charging two, three hours.
It's a level two, so if your car is completely empty, it's probably about six hours, six, seven hours.
Okay, so I mean.
Only level two.
So a dollar, even less than a dollar, would be perfectly reasonable for these rates.
Right, we're almost breaking, we're just about breaking even um for the most part. And it's does seem compared to what some other towns are doing, very reasonable, our fee structure right now.
Um, so you said the first two hours are free. I know when we set this up with the two out here originally, we did the first two hours free, obviously to entice people to park and jump off them. When we put the ones at the community center, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure we changed that ordinance to the first hour free and then you're charged after. So we may be able to change that tomorrow and start charging for that second hour.
We'll go look at the ordinance and make sure it's set up that way. I think we did make a change and it didn't hit the system on the new one.
Okay.
So go check on that.
I I think, you know, whatever, I I love spreadsheets. So whatever kind of we rattled off a lot of members. If you can send over some analysis, that would be great beyond this, um, you know, with the others. And then I guess, so then you would propose at the next meeting kind of a draft ordinance that we would talk about in new business, that we really see the change in the language.
Mm-hmm. And I did pull some of that this afternoon, just late in the day. I got P S and G's spreadsheet.
Okay, great.
If we could potentially write an ordinance that allows us to take into consideration the increase in electricity fees, right? I don't want to be in a position where we have to revise an ordinance every year. So there's some way, perhaps Brian has all these wonderful tricks. I'm sure Victoria has them as well as far as could we set an hourly by resolution every year? I know it's fee, but that has to be ordinance. So is there kind of a way we could figure that or a percent based on increase in the?
Like a range, right, like if.
Fee plus electricity.
Well, we, I I you heard that you said the word range there, the same, you know, the same way that I think we, you know, could we potentially say that we're allowed to charge between, you know, X dollars and X dollars an hour?
Set the rate each year.
Yeah. I think it's important to note that P S and G rates have to be publicly stated in their tariff and it has the effect of law, right? So they can't charge us anything that's not already established in their tariff. So it could be written in some way where it's like two dollars or certain percent percentage over their tariff rate. That being said, I appreciate that you got the numbers from them today. They are currently in the process of revising all their EV rates um and to establish more advantageous rates for EV charging, um, including time of use rates, et cetera. In fact, I think they filed their petition, their tariff petition maybe like two weeks ago. Um, all of the electric distribution companies in the state of New Jersey have been required by the board to revise their EV rates. Um, so it's something that, you know, I'm confident that the township could make a call to the Board of Public Utilities and get further information about that. Um, you can also pull down the P S and G tariff um from the BP's website. It's not always the most user friendly, so I can point to you how to get it from there, but um you would be able to pull that down as well. And then somebody from K C H G could probably explain it to you because it it can be a little wonky in that regard. But um they are usually very responsive to their municipal um uh customers, so.
I'll just make one more comment. Yeah, you know, we are getting very into the weeds on cost recoupment here and cost recoupment is great, but one of the reasons why we set parking meter rates very frequently is just to simply make sure there's a turnover of parking spaces.
Yeah.
I mean, really what we wanna do here is we wanna change behavior. I we, you know, it would be great if we, you know, make sure we're recouping the entire cost of the electric bill that's, you know, laudable. But ultimately, we want people to unplug their cars and and drive away when they're done charging and not even there all day. And that may require a rate structure and, you know, that's set accordingly and us to write tickets. And, you know, I don't wanna, you know, deliberately go after people.
The automatic ticket sounds.
I love that.
Great. I mean, it provides people, I don't love people getting tickets.
That was Brian. I have to give.
Provided, provided people get a warning.
Right, yeah.
Substantial amount of time, so in an establishment, they can move it or whatever, but that's easy because then there's no.
Yeah. I've never, I've never, I don't know, I've never enjoyed like, you know, anything that gets towards RoboCop. You know, just automatically ticketing people after something.
It's not ticketing, it's charging a higher rate. I can say about it now.
Well, yeah, that makes me sleep better.
Like as a fee.
Yeah.
Right.
The same way I don't like, you know, traffic light cameras and then, you know, with anything that basically charges you, you know, that a a person should go out there, have to go right, you would take it.
Mayor, I'm supposed to be the one that pays all these things. Just still my wonders. I'm sorry.
It was more so just like.
I was gonna, is it, is it fair to say then kind of a tier-based system you're comfortable with and we'll start to pleasure the fee structure? That was kind of more what we wanted to. Okay.
And and the the one other piece that you need to consider on intuitive um that has a life expectancy requirement, so it's a capital investment. And at some point you're gonna have to replace it, so there'll be a percentage added for profit margin, for lack of a better term, because you're gonna have to replace that equipment after X amount of years.
Yes, I potentially use it to expand our uh collection.
All right, um, anything else? Uh, new unfinished business? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to general public comments, same public comment rules five. Uh, for minutes, state your name and city, top. Uh, we're repeating other items. Uh, council may or may address your comments afterwards, or we'll be in a close up. Uh, I do see one hand up. Welcome, Mr. Ryan.
Yes, uh, Kevin Ryan, Verona, New Jersey. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, you know, now that the uh the resolution has officially been pulled, uh, I don't believe you were able to address my question as to how much of the background material on that resolution for the shared services would be available to the public before you vote on it?
Um, I just, uh, just following our comment procedure. Is that the extent of your comment or question?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. All right, um, anyone else? Yes, sir, please go for it.
So that's uh Sylvan Road.
Oh, sorry, Verona. Good to see you.
Good, I had a question. Uh, you guys mentioned shared services. I was wondering about shared service with vegetable uh recycling.
Okay.
West Orange does a good job.
Excellent.
They have a huge gigantic facility up on Route ten or one of those roads over there. And I had occasion to drop stuff off there when I lived in West Orange.
Okay, uh, appreciate it. All right, any other, anything else for us?
Cool.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any further public comment? Last call? All right, I'll now close public comment. Um, to Mr. Ryan's comments, uh, I would say that anything that does not, you know, fall under under approval with related specific employees, uh, certainly the contract itself, I think is, uh, you know, we would want to publish. Um, any material that we showed today regarding financials, um, anything that we, you know, I again transparency, as long as there's not a reason why we have to redact something, um, I'm happy to post it. Does anyone have any, you know?
No.
Okay.
The version of the contract we got was like a track changes. Can we just post a clean ones? And it would be nice.
Exactly. And then uh I will just say thank you very much. So we will uh, we will, you know, look into that. So thank you very much. Okay, um, we're going to move into executive session. Do we need to take any um official action thereafter? No, okay, no official act will be taken. We will adjourn thereafter. Thank you. Everybody have a good night.